Here.
Alderman Duknekak is excused, Alderman Duknekak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Alderman Kerkowski, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Everybody, please take a look at the minutes of June 4th, 2019. There are no omissions, errors, or questions.
Guzekowski will make a motion to approve the minutes of June 14th, of June 4th, 2019.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry. Toman, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Duknekak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Item four is consideration of a council proclamation for our own Alderman Chris Guzekowski of the 6th District for being named Citizen of the Year. Catherine.
Council proclamation 19-08, congratulations to Chris Guzekowski, 2018 Oak Creek Citizen of the Year. Whereas, the Oak Creek Citizen of the Year Committee conducts an annual search for the person who in its judgment is most deserving of acknowledgement because of a loyal, unselfish, and patriotic service to the community. And whereas, the Oak Creek Citizen of the Year Committee has selected Chris Guzekowski as its 2018 Citizen of the Year, for which he will be duly honored at a recognition dinner on Friday, June 14th, 2019. And where Chris was born and raised in Oak Creek, has been married to his wife Colleen for 30 years, and has three children, Alyssa, Carly, and Lauren. And whereas, Chris was a member of the first class to attend Shepherd Hills Elementary before continuing on at Oak Creek Junior High and graduating from Oak Creek High School. And whereas, after high school graduation, Chris Guzekowski spent time serving his country in the United States Air Force. And whereas, Chris has worked for Western States Envelope and Label for 30 years, Chris's job provides many opportunities, of which was becoming the team chairperson for years for the company's Al's Walk and Run Team and his involvement in the annual Spikes for Tykes volleyball team fundraiser. And whereas, Chris is a member of St. Stephen Congregation, in addition to parishioner, has worn many hats, including serving on multiple communities. Chris currently serves as the Eucharist Cup Minister and is on the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Additionally, Chris served on the Parish Council for 15 years, both as member and president, and was a parish trustee secretary for 12 years, where Chris had the role as an owner's rep for the new church that was being built in Oak Creek. With the construction, Chris headed up the parish's transition team, facilitating the church's move from Milwaukee to Oak Creek. And whereas, Chris has co-chired the congregation's Friday Fish Fries for three years and worked at the parish festival. And whereas, Chris was appointed to the Oak Creek Community Center Board of Directors in 2015 and has volunteered many hours at the many banquets held at the facility. In addition, Chris has volunteered at the yearly summer concert series, the auction, the dream drawing, the September Fest, and evenings of blessings, as well as helping out in the kitchen during the annual breakfast with Santa. Whereas, for many years as band dad, Chris Guzekowski volunteered his time to the Oak Creek High School Band, parking cars at the annual Oak Creek Lions Fest, before becoming a member of the Oak Creek Lions Club in 2015. Whereas, in April of 2014, Chris successfully won the office of 6th District Alder Person in the city and has served on the Common Council since that time. In addition to Chris's council duties, he also served on the city's Plan Commission, Library Board, Landscape and Beautification Committee, Capital Improvements Committee, and ad hoc Lake Vista Park Committee. Whereas, prior to becoming 6th District Alder Person, Chris Guzekowski served on the Oak Creek Library Planning Committee, which was responsible for planning and designing the new library at its current location at the Oak Creek Civic Center. Chris also previously served as a citizen representative on both the city's Traffic and Safety Commission and Board of Housing and Zoning Appeals. And whereas, Chris has rendered countless hours of community service, equating the Oak Creek Lions Club motto of "We Serve," living each day as a person of service, and is truly deserving of this recognition. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council of the city of Oak Creek hereby congratulate Chris Guzekowski on being selected the 2018 Oak Creek Citizen of the Year. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby directed, to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Chris Guzekowski, presented and adopted this 18th day of June, 2019.
Thank you, Catherine. Many of you were there on Friday night when Chris received his award. Would anybody like to comment on Chris? Go ahead, Mike.
Congratulations, Chris, with very impressive record over the years, what you've done for this city and what... It's incredible when you read all this stuff.
Thanks.
And also, a personal thank you. I've been a Oak Creek Lions Club member for 25 years, and we're proud to have you as a member of our club. Thank you.
Mike. Anyone else? No.
Chris, I said it Friday night, again, the city couldn't be prouder to count you amongst one of our residents. And to be an Alderman too is just a blessing for the city. So again, on behalf of the residents, the entire city staff, the common council, and myself, congratulations, well deserved.
Motion, please.
We'll move to approve the common council proclamation 19-08, congratulations to Chris Guzekowski, 2018 Oak Creek Citizen of the Year.
Duknekak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Stain?
Oh, go ahead, say aye.
That's a trick question. We have a nay?
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Duknekak.
Aye.
That's funny. Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
Item five is another council proclamation, consideration of Patricia Parks for dedicated service as a member of the Oak Creek Library Board. Catherine.
Council proclamation number 1907 to Patricia Parks for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the library board. Whereas, Patricia Parks was appointed to the library board on April 20th, 2010, and has served for over nine years. And whereas, Patricia Parks served as Secretary of the Library Board for three years, from 2013 to 2016, and is a member of the Friends of the Library. And whereas, Patricia has been a strong advocate for moving forward with the construction of the new Oak Creek Public Library. And whereas, Patricia has been a volunteer leader of multiple library book clubs for more than 10 years. And whereas, Patricia has resigned from the library board to spend time with friends and family. And whereas, Patricia has served the city in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council of the city of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Patricia Parks for her dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the library board. Be it further resolved that the proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby directed, to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Patricia Parks, introduced and adopted this 18th day of June, 2019.
Thank you, Catherine. Does anybody like to say a few words? Ken?
Thanks, Dan. Pat is actually a personal friend of mine, and I know she, along with Carol and the other folks on the Libr-oid, have loved their service to the community in terms of the library board. She is a long-term retired teacher from the city of Oak Creek as well, so she has served her community for a long time. We wish her well as she kind of takes a little break and goes back into the audience a little bit, so to speak, but she does love her library and we appreciate all her service to the community.
Thank you, Ken. Chris?
I too was able to serve with her on the library board and also with the building committee. She definitely was at Shepherd Hills when I was at Shepherd Hills. As stated in my proclamation, I was the first class to go all the way through Shepherd Hills, so I had her as a teacher while I was at Shepherd Hills. So, thank you, Ms. Parks.
Very good. Anyone else? Now, I'm going to add my congratulations and thanks to her too. Did a terrific job for us on the library board. It's great to see so many people here, to hear these proclamations, and realize just how hard some of the residents are working to make things like the library run. Did a tremendous job over the construction of it, and just setting up the events along with the rest of the board members. So, our thanks to Patricia for her time served and her sharing of her expertise and, more importantly, her time and dedication to the city. Motion.
We'll move to approve council proclamation 19-07 to Patricia Parks for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the library board.
Guzekowski, a little second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Duknekak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item six is a mayoral proclamation for congratulations to Savalia Financial Advisors on their 20th anniversary. Catherine?
Congratulations to Savalia Financial Advisors on their 20th anniversary. Whereas, Savalia Financial Advisors was started on July 1st, 1999, with a focus on building a place where average people could get educated advice from someone who is in their corner. And whereas, Savalia Financial Advisors has grown to include eight staff members and has over 1,000 clients located throughout southeast Wisconsin. Whereas, Savalia Financial Advisors helps working families, people nearing retirement, widows, divorcees, and small business owners. And whereas, Savalia Financial Advisors is a local independent financial planning firm that has been located in Oak Creek since its founding 20 years ago. And whereas, Don Savalia, the owner, is a longtime basketball coach who spent 39 years coaching various Oak Creek boys' select basketball teams, Franklin High School girls' basketball, and select teams, as well as countless other teams. And whereas, Savalia Financial Advisors is a longstanding sponsor of many community events, such as the Oak Creek Community Center Concert Series, Oak Creek Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, and Oak Creek and Garden District's National Night Out. The Savalia team also volunteers their time to several causes, including the Hunger Task Force Farm in Franklin, mentoring Franklin High School students, serving its host families, and volunteering for the AFS Foreign Exchange Student Programs. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel Bukavich, mayor, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek, hereby congratulate Savalia Financial Advisors on their 20th anniversary.
Thank you, Catherine. Councilman, any comments regarding Savalia?
Rich Duknekak, 3rd district, I've had the pleasure of dealing with Don both on a personal and professional level. A great guy to work with and really quite an asset to our community. During my 17 years of being the executive director at the Oak Creek Community Center, he dedicated not only countless hours of volunteer time at the center, but thousands of dollars worth of sponsorship money, as was mentioned in the mayoral proclamation. One thing that was missed was Don was our first major sponsor for September Fest, and that was the annual beer tasting event. Back in 2000, not many beer tastings were done throughout the area or the state. Now you have one probably every other day of the week, but Don had the vision to help the community center through sponsorship. He certainly does that, and the center continues to provide both quality programs and resources for the community. So, Don, congratulations on 20 years of business in Oak Creek.
Thank you, Rich. Anyone else?
I'll just make mention, just an outstanding business and supporter of the community. You can find this Savalia team at the farmer's market. They provide all the free water to the nonprofit groups. Last week, it was a scouting troop. They give them the water to sell for their projects that go forward. So, he is celebrating 20 years in business. There is an event being held at Lake Vista Park on the 22nd, and the public is invited. He's going to have fireworks down there to celebrate his 20 years. So, if you get a chance, please take it in. And again, if you see Don, congratulate him. So...
Great, no motion needed on that one. We will move to item seven, and that is consideration of a resolution of appreciation to Officer Abel, who is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Force.
Last one. Resolution number 12073061819, resolution of appreciation to Todd R. Abel. Whereas, Todd R. Abel began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on December 29th, 1997, is a full-time police officer. And whereas, during his 21 years and six months of service, Todd has been an integral part of the police department while serving as a patrol officer. And whereas, Todd has served the citizens of Oak Creek with honor. And whereas, Todd has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has been well-known for his work ethic and his dedication to the department. And whereas, Todd received two shift acknowledgements, five letters of commendations, and one lifesaving award in recognition of his efforts and hard work as an officer for the Oak Creek Police Department. Whereas, Todd is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing 21 years and six months of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Todd R. Abel for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the police department. And that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Todd R. Abel and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Todd R. Abel, passed and adopted this 18th day of June, 2019.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Anybody want to say anything on Officer Abel's behalf? If not, I will. I mean, you heard it all in the proclamation. Todd gave us over 20 years of service to this city. The city is far better off for his efforts and his dedication, helping protect and serve the community. This council, on behalf of the council and myself, we wish him a very long and happy retirement. Motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Gale will move to approve his resolution 12073061819, a resolution of appreciation to Todd R. Abel, retiring police officer.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Duknekak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Okay. Item seven begins our public hearing, and that is to consider a request by David DeSanto of Mott Homes to rezone and establish a residential planned unit development at the property at 10730 South Howell Avenue. Before we start this public hearing, we're going to lay down the ground rules, because we have quite a few speakers tonight. So you will be limited to three minutes. When your name is called, approach the podium, give your name and address. You have three minutes to say what you need to say. If you are going to be redundant in what other speakers say, I ask that you just come up and respectfully say what so-and-so said. Keep it short and brief. We have quite a number of people here. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Catherine to read the notice, and then we'll go to Doug.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request by David DeSanto of Mott Home LLC to rezone and establish a residential planned unit development, PUD, at the property of 10730 South Howell Avenue. Applicant is David DeSanto, Mott Home LLC, property owner, 10730 South Howell LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is May 22nd, 2019.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I am the Director of Community Development for the city of Oak Creek, and this is a public hearing and a request to rezone the property at 10730 South Howell Avenue to RD1 two-family residential with a planned unit development. Just as a note, no changes to the floodway or travel and other conservancy zoning districts would be included as part of this rezoning request. Per the submitted narrative and general development plan, the PUD would include 85 single-family residences with an condominium ownership structure. This was reassessed from 87 at the initial appearance before the Plan Commission. At that appearance before the Plan Commission on May 14th, the commission considered the request. There were concerns raised regarding density, and there were questions asked regarding the anticipated purchases versus leases, soil conditions, drainage, and ownership. Public comments included concerns, again, for drainage, density, rental units, traffic, and construction periods. So, a motion was made to recommend to the council approval of the planned unit development. That motion was tied on a 3-3 vote. So, in essence, in those cases, a tie is a... and on approval of the ordinance, in essence, a denial of the recommendation. In those cases, the applicant and any applicant has the opportunity to proceed to the common council for consideration of their request at a public hearing, which is happening this evening. So, laying this out for the council in consideration, and should they wish to consider the ordinance to rezone this property, they have the option of adopting the ordinance that's before you this evening. But what that also does is it sends this back to the Plan Commission at their next meeting for the consideration of what we call conditions and restrictions in a general development plan. And in their role as the planning commission, they are chargers, kind of coming up with those conditions and some of the more site details for this. Typically, those would be included in the initial recommendation from the Plan Commission and the common council. However, since that motion failed, and this was moving forward to the council without, in essence, a recommendation of approval, this would need to go back to the Plan Commission, although you would, in essence, have the option of approving that ordinance this evening. It is my understanding that... I've been turning this back over to the mayor, who's going to ask the applicant to make a brief presentation before the public hearing. But after that, the mayor will open the public hearing. As indicated, he will call for comments three times, and if you are interested and have not already filled out a comment form, please do so. Once your name is called, please approach the podium and proceed to address your question and or comment to the common council. So with that, mayor, if you'd like to bring up the applicant.
Certainly. Would the applicant please come up? Please proceed with your presentation, please.
Very good. Thank you. Do I need to go through my name and address?
Yeah, you need it all.
First name is Jeremy, last name is Samadis. 670 North Park Boulevard, Glen Ellen, Illinois. First, I want to take just a couple moments to thank and make some opening remarks. I want to send a... make a brief introduction, say thank you to Doug Seymour, Kerry Papelbon, the mayor, and several of the aldermen who have been instrumental in helping us get to this point, guiding us along the way. You've challenged us, we've gone back, we've made some revisions, things such as whiffs of the streets for safety purposes, sidewalks, parking, all the concerns that would be important to any resident as well as community. We went back and we're working with the community and the city of Oak Creek to make those changes. So, thank you for challenging us on that. Our goal, obviously, is to put together a well-designed home/community next to the neighbors to the north and the east. And I know a lot of the neighbors that are here tonight probably aren't in support of this, is what I would rather guess, but at the same time, I'm hoping in that in the brief moments that I could spend to go through the project, that there hopefully maybe will be a full understanding of exactly the need, the desire, and kind of where we're trying to go with this. Because ultimately, we believe that we want to get it right, and we believe we have a plan that both addresses a benefit for both the community and the residents of Oak Creek. It fills a need, and it's a priority that hasn't been identified, has and is identified in the strategic plan for single-family residential options in the city of Oak Creek. So, with that being said, on the visual right now, you'll see what is a, as Doug mentioned, a slight revised down from 87 to now 85 homes. You'll see just some of the nuts and bolts facts of what we're proposing as part of this rental, single-family homes, broken down by two phases, starting in the fall of 2019, assuming all goes well from this point on. So, Doug, if you wouldn't mind, I just want to kind of highlight and go through. I just want to put it out there, because I think, again, there's a misnomer, and I wanted to just be very clear that, you know, our goal is to provide Oak Creek access to what we're calling attainable luxury homes for rent, right? Professional maintenance, free living, integrated with well-designed features, floor plans, and amenities. I've said it many times, and I think I made this comment in the May meeting, that today in society, we have a lot of renters by choice. And so, you know, people ask, well, who are these kind of renters? You know, are they the kind of renters that we want in Oak Creek? There's a large, over 1,000-plus apartment condo inventory that's currently either online or coming online in the city of Oak Creek, and there's concern about that. At the same time, we see this as an opportunity to have continued families, empty nesters, seniors, these could be new residents to Oak Creek that are, quote, "taking a test drive" before they're making a final purchase decision or deciding to continue to rent. One of the big things I want to talk about is... the next slide, Doug, if you don't mind, is everyone can read, so I'm not going to go through some of the statistics, but I want to make it clear that we know today that homeownership is on the drop. And as interest rates are coming down, homeownership's at a 20-year low. And we believe that our goal is to provide rental homes skewing toward the larger three-bedroom, three-bath, and I'll show you kind of how we did our breakdown, because if you look at the overall inventory of apartments and condos in Oak Creek today, there's a real need for larger homes for families. Or in this case, the example I use is somebody who might be living right here at Forge &amp; Flair or one of the apartment buildings, and because they only have one two-bedroom option, somebody has another kid and decides, well, where do I go? With a limited inventory, not only in the United States, for single-family rental homes, we believe that this fulfills that need to give people that opportunity, families, and as I mentioned, other benefactors of being able to rent in the community. So, and at the bottom, I just want to make a special point, too, that these assessed values and the permits are going to yield a fiscal impact that's going to benefit the community. So, I'll talk a little bit more about that, because I think there's a little bit of a misrepresentation that was out there about what is the benefit? What are we, as a developer, receiving for doing this type of a project? So, Doug, if you wouldn't mind, the next slide? I've touched upon a little bit of this, and I just want to highlight a couple things that, as I mentioned, today's, you know, renters-by-choice society, expanding them, giving them options, flexibility, the zero-maintenance obligation that you can't find in traditional homeownership. It may not be for everybody, but we believe there really is a need for it. So, you know, we consider these thoughtful amenities, such as the fitness center, the pool, the walking trails, the dog park, and the connection we're going to make to the Oak Leaf Trail. So, we believe that these upgrades in our community clubhouse will be a real benefit for our residents who are choosing to live here. So, I mentioned earlier about our diverse home mix, right? So we've narrowed it down to five floor plans, of which the, as you can see, 85% of these will be skewed toward the three-bedroom homes. And I talked a little bit about that already. Ranging anywhere from our smallest unit, which is our two-bedroom, two-bath, will be about 1,150 square feet, up to our largest three-bedroom, which will be just under 2,100 square feet. Most of these will have two-car garages, integrated porches, and very, very consistent with the type of homes that you would find here in Oak Creek. And that was very deliberate in terms of the styles and the amenities and the way we wanted to create these homes based on Oak Creek and what we know to be true today from median household incomes, as well as housing values, and to stay consistent with what's already here. So, I'm just going to touch on this for a moment. This is actually three pictures that I took from the models and floor plans and some of the features that we're going to have in our specific houses that we'll be designing. So, you know, the open floor plans, each one of the floors on the main level will have nine-foot ceilings. Each home will be integrated with a fireplace, with a full stone surround, the cabinetry. On the left picture, you'll see the cabinetry that goes alongside will be in the house as well. Energy start appliances, manufactured wood floors, all the things, again, that I think you would find in some of these apartment buildings, condos, and newer custom-built homes today in the city of Oak Creek. And each unit will, of course, have a full-size washer and dryer and things that any homeowner or home renter today would expect. This is probably the most important slide that we went back and we talked about and had a lot of debate with, and I want to make sure, and this is where I was mentioning about maybe the not having a true understanding or maybe a misrepresentation of how we're going to do this development, how's it funded, how's it going to work? So, the question on the first one is, is the city contributing dollars to this development? The simple answer is no. This is 100% privately funded. This is very different than other communities in different TIF districts. So we are going to pay, and we're going to pay all the impact fees. There's been no concessions made for us to bring this development to the city of Oak Creek. The drainage issues that those living on Christina Court had brought up, I have Dan Yonkey from Kapoor, he can speak more in depth about the surveys that were done and how we've addressed the drainage issues here today. But in essence, we are, you know, we have a management and a retention system for the site that's per city code and county codes. It's been approved by the qualified staff at the city and county, and it'll have zero impact on the neighboring parcels. There was a comment and several comments that I've heard about, you know, potentially a disproportionate impact on crime in the city. I think it's important for everyone to understand that we will take all of the same precautions and safety measures under the, you know, fair housing requirements, screening 100% of our applicants for criminal and credit worthiness to live in this community. Let's be very, very frank, these rents are not cheap. Our interests will be 100% aligned with the community to find quality tenants who are going to live in this community so that we can be good neighbors. That's ultimately what our residents will be. The question came up about the management and some of the comments about a Chicago developer coming up here and puts up his community and walks away. The reality is, we will be engaging and hiring a third-party professional management company, no different than what you'll find here. no different than what you'll find here with Forge and Flair, Drexel Town Square, whatever it may be, companies like, you know, Berkey Management Company, and several others that are third-party, local, local third-party management companies. And they'll, they'll be responsible for the full-time maintenance and ensuring that the property is maintaining, including all of the houses, the yards, and the common areas. There was question about, well, renters won't take care of these houses. Arguable, but in our mind, because these rents aren't cheap, and you have a third-party, and there's a condo association that will oversee this from a structural standpoint, I think the concern is alleviated that these, these houses will, will be well-maintained, as well as the entire property throughout. I just wanted to point out, I brought this slide up last time, and I just wanted to make one quick mention of it, that obviously, we've engaged a very competent team of, of local Wisconsin firms that do different things for us. The only one who's not local is Rochester Homes, who we've engaged, they're out of Indiana, but they do a lot of work here in the Midwest. Von Briesen is our legal team. Steve is here, who can obviously answer any in-depth questions that may come up. Keller is one of our architect, planning, and builders, who will help us with the community clubhouse. That'll be built from the ground up as well. And then I mentioned Dan Yonkey from Kapor, who's helped us with all of our storms, sewer water issues that I know have been expressed or raised, and they're also a local company. Just a quick, quick point, I didn't, I didn't make reference to it this time, but just so everyone knows, my partner and I, on the development side of life, have a really unique kind of blend of experiences. I'm, I'm a senior healthcare by trade, that's kind of what I did. I also was part of a, several developments of Marriott Hospitality, as well as a couple restaurants in the Chicago area. But the majority of my experience really is on the senior housing side, assisted living, nursing homes, and rehab facilities. My partner has several years of traditional multifamily experience. He's got collectively, between the both of us, we've done, you know, 8,500 residential units across 12 different states in the United States. And so, we have a proven track record in all market cycles. This will be the first project of this particular nature, and that doesn't scare us, because we believe it fits right into the same realm of a multifamily type of project that my partner and I have been involved in, whether that be seniors or just any other resident/tenant type of relationship. So, I just want to point that out. I'm going to kind of stop there, but I'm hoping that, that gives, gives you a sense of what we're trying to do. And in the end, like I said, I, our, our goal, I believe, is 100% aligned with this community, and I believe it's aligned with a need that is in Oak Creek, based on the strategic plan that's been laid out there for housing, and single-family housing, which is not in the market today here in Oak Creek. There's very, very few options for rentals of single-family homes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will begin the public hearing. Keep in mind, one more ground rule, we will not have any hollering from the audience, raising of hands. You're going to address a question, address it to the council, not to the audience, not to the applicant. We're going to take notes, we're going to answer the questions as we can, if we can take care of them quickly. If not, we will come back on them, we'll jot them down up here, and we'll return back to them. So, again, this will be an orderly meeting. First, who we got? Yeah, let's read in the record first. Doug, you want to read yours first? We had, we had a request by some people that emailed in their, their requests, they couldn't be present here, so we'll start with.
Thank you, and this is just one, one email, and it's actually a chain, but I'll just read the most recent reply, and I'll leave off names of people. But, "In response to the questions that you had posed, first question was, has there been a traffic study done on the proposed two entrances to Howell from this development? Traffic regularly goes 50 to 55 miles per hour at this point, and there's, there is a large hill that obstructs views of the coming road. In response to that, I said, Howell Avenue, which is State Highway 38, is under the jurisdiction of the State of Wisconsin Department of Transportation. They are responsible for reviewing driveway access on the state highways, and will do so as part of any plan review, be it for a single-family subdivision or this proposed condominium development. They would address those design details as part of their review." Question was, what is going to be the limits on this proposed dog park that is currently in the residents' backyards, hours of operation, lighting, cleanup, et cetera? In response, I said, should the council adopt the approval resolution, the plan commission would then review a document called Conditions and Restrictions. That document would regulate, among other things, the location and operation of the dog park, hours of operation, lighting, and I don't believe there is any planned, and cleanup would be appropriate items to discuss as part of those conditions and restrictions. Third question, is there any plan to add in a berm or blocking vegetation, trees, et cetera, between the development and the surrounding houses? Response is that there is an area of wetland and floodplain adjacent to, and in most cases, part of the lots on Christina Court. Therefore, berms or any other structures typically would not be permitted within the floodway or wetland. What is the current vacancy rate of rentals in Oak Creek? What is the current available market for single-family homes? What is the typical time that a rental is vacant versus how long a single-family home is on the market? Couple of bullets in response to that. Well, the city does not track that statistic, that being vacancy rates internally, there are market reports that place the overall vacancy rate at less than 5%. And given the unique, and by that I mean new-to-the-market nature of this single-family development, there likely is not enough data to draw a statistical conclusion. However, the appraisal suggests that a 5% vacancy rate is appropriate. Second bullet, the current market for single-family homes, new construction, is constrained because of supply and development costs. There currently are two new subdivisions, Glen Crossing and Phase Two, and East Brook Preserve, that have lots available. Third bullet, the city does not track time on market for rental units or single-family homes. However, again, a 5% vacancy rate within the industry is considered to be stabilized. Next question, what happens if these units cannot be rented out? Is there a lower limit for the rental price that would be allowed per the business agreement? For example, they can't find tenants for all the units, so they lower the price to $1,500. There typically would not be any restrictions on the rental price for development of this type, or for a single-family home, for that matter. The market would dictate the sale or rental price. However, the economics of a project like this, and any project, would indicate that a certain sale or rental price would be needed to make any development costs work. Regardless, there would be a third-party onsite management company that would be responsible for leasing and maintenance of these units. Next, I've heard several developments locally recently, I'm sorry, I've heard of several developments locally recently where the developer ran out of money because, between phases of building, and converted subsequent phases into low-income or affordable housing. Is there a place, plan in place to present, prevent this for this development? Excuse me. In response, I am not aware of any such developments in Oak Creek. There have been instances where condominiums have been used as rental properties. The conditions and restrictions in general development plan would require the development to be built in accordance with the approved plans. The zoning would not allow for multifamily residential development. Any substantial changes, and, in parentheses, that I would consider a change to the building types to be substantial, would require additional review and public hearings by the city. This development is anticipated to be constructed in two phases. Finally, at the last meeting, it was stated that, quote-unquote, "there wasn't enough money in single-family lot packages." What kind of benefits, in parentheses, monetary, will this development be bringing to Oak Creek in the next five to 10 years? Are these developers being, being given any incentives, tax or otherwise, to push this project through here? In response, I said, I suspect that you were referring to the current economics of single-family subdivision development. The challenge at this point, given land costs, infrastructure development costs, and construction costs, is creating lots that meet the market demand for this area. The current available subdivision lots, and I counted as of this morning on Zillow, 11 available lots, average $126,809. In many cases, and most cases, actually, that means that a home built on this lot would likely cost at least $400,000. Second bullet, the developer is not receiving any incentives, tax, or otherwise. Based on the anticipated value of a little over $23 million for both phases of this development, the residential development is anticipated, based on existing tax rates, to contribute impact fees, which is police, fire, parks, library, and bikeways, of a little over $39, $339,000, and that's a one-time payment, and $490,642 a year in local property taxes to all jurisdictions, which includes the county, the Oak Creek Franklin School District, MATC, NMSD, as well as the city. The values projected equate to a projected value of $273,411 per single-family home, which compares to a mean assessed value of $275,897 for the homes in the surrounding neighborhood. Since this residential community would be served by private streets, there would be no additional public maintenance costs, i.e. snowplowing, trash or recycling pickup, street lighting, compared to a typical subdivision.
Thank you, Doug. As I said, we have a few that emailed in, we're going to respect their wishes and read them into the public record. We will then take the, the people that just want it to be acknowledged and read into the public record, then we'll, we'll call the speakers. So, first one from the email. Here are city council members. I'm opposed to the new development being proposed by Mod Homes LLC. I am a homeowner who lives on Christina Court, which is adjacent to the property where the new development is being considered. I'm opposed to this new development, because it will negatively affect my property value, create more congestion, and make my neighborhood less safe. Over the past few years, I have been seeing more traffic from the Oak View Business Park and the nearby FedEx facility, and this is affecting my daily commute to work. I would like Oak Creek to preserve this land as green space for our community. I think it would be put to much better use as a park with a playground, baseball and soccer fields, and a picnic area. One of the main reasons I decided to move to Oak Creek was a nice balance between urban and country living. This development would further erode that balance and make me reconsider staying in Oak Creek. I would like this email to be read at the common council meeting on June 18th, so my opinion is heard. Thank you. Carl Hasick, 10778 South Christina Court. Please, nope, no, no clapping. Next, Mayor Bukowicz, Alderman Gell, Ms. Papelbon. I ask that this email be read and included on the record at the city council meeting on June 18th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. I will be in attendance and have asked my neighbors to be there as well. I'm a 15-year resident of Oak Creek. For the last 10 years, I have been a resident of 486 East Connor Court in the Georgetown Common Subdivision off Howell Avenue and Elm Road. Our neighborhood is made up of long-term, hard-working citizens who go to great lengths to take care of their homes and their properties. I am writing to voice my concerns, ultimately, disapproval of the recently announced proposal to build modular rental homes directly west of Georgetown Commons between Christina Court and Howell Avenue. 10 years ago, we chose to buy, to buy our home in Georgetown Commons because of the quiet neighborhood and the projected upward trend of property values. With the possibility of building modular rental homes adjacent to our neighborhood, both of those benefits are at risk with increased traffic and rental properties bringing down the value of adjacent owned homes. In addition, the proposed plan appears to be very crowded and ill-suited for the space, which includes wetlands. When one says modular home, the first thing I think of is trailer home. I believe that is exactly what we will have here. Modular homes are poorly constructed, and especially in the hands of renters, and will not stand the test of time. Monthly rental rates will fall, and will bring the property values of adjacent homeowners down with it. I'm concerned with the increasing crime rate that is a byproduct of rental development, and having the crimes spill over into the Georgetown Commons neighborhood. As Oak Creek is booming commercially, I have witnessed a steady increase in the value of my home, in addition to that of my neighbors. Most properties are sold in Georgetown Commons are not for sale long. It is a desirable place to live in Oak Creek. I do not ruin those trends by having, please do not ruin those trends by having modular rental homes next to our neighborhood. Oak Creek can ill-afford to build another rental community, let alone one that is comprised of modular homes. I'm proud to be a citizen of Oak Creek, and implore you to make the right decision that your taxpayers and loyal homeowners demand, that the modular home development not be allowed to be built on the proposed land between Howell Avenue and Christina Court. Sincerely, Jared A. Radke, homeowner, 486 East Connor, Oak Creek, 53154. My last one. Good morning, Mayor Bukowicz and Ms. Papelbon. I'm writing you to voice my concerns regarding the proposed development on Howell and Elm Street. Unfortunately, I'm not sure if I can make it in time to speak in person, as I land at the airport at 7:20 PM, but will try. This isn't very, this is very important to me. I'd like the below read and considered for tonight's meeting. We moved to Oak Creek about a year and a half ago. We believe it was a growing and thriving community and want it to be part of it. We found our dream home in a cul-de-sac neighborhood with a quiet, quiet surrounding, perfect for our son and baby to be, now eight months old. We have made a big financial investment into the community with this property, and for our family, and what was supposed to be the rest of our lives. Now it is at risk, not just for us, but for all the neighbors who've made similar investments. I'm very concerned about the proposed development. The current proposal doesn't seem like a good fit for the location and existing neighborhood. My biggest concerns are the quality of the units for the space, I'm sorry, the quantity of the units for the space, and what that will mean in terms of traffic, noise, and light pollution. In addition, I am worried about the damaging effects of their retention ponds on the natural habitats and wetlands that, that are here, and create such a nice environment for the neighborhood and the trails and paths. I've seen crane deer and even a beaver dam, something which should be preserved and treasured and not destroyed. Another concern of mine is why there would be a need for a walking path made through my neighbors' yards into the neighborhood. I would hope we would connect the two neighborhoods, utilizing sidewalks, connecting at Howell and Elm, rather than going through personal property out of respect for homeowners, which is capitalized. Same for connecting through the Oak Leaf Trail via a path along Howell. I would rather wait for a proposal that fits the existing neighborhood and the right fit, instead of taking the first offer that comes along. The suggested rent for one of these units is about $2,000, almost the same as my mortgage on Christina Court for a 2,800-square-foot home with .8 acres. I think this development might make more sense near Drexel Town Square, IKEA, et cetera, not a quiet, sleepy neighborhood, which is why we're all here to speak up. I'd like this, I'd like it to stay quiet and private. My biggest fear is that this is merely a testing ground for this type of development for the development company, as, as they mentioned, this has not been done before, and they are trying, trying it on a much, it's never been done before, trying it on a much more expensive Illinois property, making us residents left, didn't make sense. Excuse me, my biggest fear is that this is merely a testing ground for this type of development for the development company. As they mentioned, this has not been done before, before trying it on a much more expensive Illinois property, making us residents left to live with the results of their test rental property. I would like answers to the below. Is there any consideration for decreasing the number of units? Are there any plans to plant a partial of evergreens or arborvitae along the property line to minimize noise and light pollution? What portion of the development is phase one versus phase two? How long will the construction take? Is there a limit to the number of streetlights that will be allowed to reduce light pollution and pool lighting? Are there actual renderings of the units to be built, not the inspirational photos previously shown? I hope you all consider stopping by the property to see how it fits in our existing neighborhoods. Don't hesitate to stop by and say hi when you're there. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. Suzie Repulinski, 10851 South Christina Court. These were submitted, and they would like to be read publicly and submitted to the record. Pete Francisus, 559 East Connor Court. I'm against the rezone, the 20-acre lot on the corner of Howell and Elm, to enable the building of the rental complex. Concerns include increased traffic, decrease in property values, and overall impact to the ecosystem. Again, wish to, not to speak, but would like, like the comment read publicly. Mr. Basil Theus, 976 East Bridgewater Court. I'm against what is the kind of, I'm against this, what kind of tax breaks are you giving up for the city on this? And is federal money involved with the city or the builder? Again, please read this publicly, but do not wish to speak. Joe Brooks, 1401 East Mass Drive. These types of homes are not meant to last. I am worried about the appearance. I am worried about the appearance and loss of value of the neighborhood when the fad is over and the economy no longer supports this type of rental. I can't break my lease on my new home. I have to sell it. Also way too many homes for the space. Again, please read in publicly, but do not wish to speak. Joshua Klugen, 10723 South Christina Court. By email, Doug Seymour estimated $490,000 in potential tax income from this 85-home development. To oversimplify, if this instead was subdivided into 40 single-family home lot packages, we'd be looking at approximately $240,000 minimum tax income. Is the additional $150,000 in revenue truly enough to support impact fees, including the potential for additional schools to be built? And item 8, do not wish to speak, but would like it to be made part of the record. Janice Tass, 976 East Bridgewater Court. I feel that having rentals in our neighborhood is detrimental. As a former Milwaukee landlord, I personally know that renters won't care about properties or the neighborhood. There will be more people, crime, and more stress on our schools. Our taxes will end up increasing to pay for the extra services. I don't want this. Again, this is a public hearing. We will make three calls. This will be the first call. When your name is read, please approach the podium, give your name and address, and your comments. You will have three minutes. First, Ms. Nicole Koteki.
Hoping I would go first. Nicole Koteki, 10765 South Christina Court. I agree with everything that's been read and said. I kind of just wanted to know, we're given all these numbers and things to take into account, but I kind of wanted to see like the humanity in it, if it was literally your backyard. I'm the house right behind them, center, front and center, right behind them. I look at them from my kitchen window, my kids play in the backyard, and I just kind of, the people that voted yes last time, and it doesn't look, only one of you are here, but I just, would you vote yes if it was your backyard? You know, if it was what you're looking at every day, would you say yes? And I just think, if you wouldn't, it just isn't right to put it on us if you wouldn't wish it for yourself. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, Eric Koteki.
Eric Koteki, 10765 South Christina Court. I feel like we just did this. We thought 87 was ridiculous, 85 isn't much of a reduction, especially in a 20-acre period, I'm sorry, a 20-acre lot. You do the math, that's not a lot of space. They talked about being in line with the needs of the community. I don't think they care too much about our community. The community's here, the community showed up. It's pretty clear the community doesn't want this, they're against this. Traffic, noise, pollution, crime, those are all concerns. But again, the community is here. The community showed up tonight, and I thank everybody for coming, and it looks like we don't want this in our community. And this isn't their community. Their community is Chicago, they want to build and bail and get a paycheck, and they'll be gone. So, we got to deal with it. Thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Melinda Dobbs, 10536 South Austin Street. I've lived just north of that location for about 55 years now. As far as I know, that's always been a flood zone. When it rains, I can see River from my house. I think, you know, from 87 to 85, that's just unacceptable to have that many houses in that area. I think that we need to find a different way to approach this. We've kind of taken this, retention ponds seem to be the answer for everything. We need to look at the runoff into River. We have award-winning water, but yet we don't seem to be doing things to back that up in the things that we do. Again, the traffic, while it's 45 there, if you ask anybody who lives there, they don't slow down for that. They're usually going at least 65 from the 55, that's over the river. I see that there's two entrances for that subdivision, there's two entrances on the other side for the industrial park. There's two entrances for my subdivision. That's a lot of congestion, a lot of traffic, and to put it off on the state, we need an answer today, not to leave that to the state for the congestion that that's going to cause. And across the street, that was actually, at one point, supposed to be a park, instead you turned it into an industrial park. I would like to see some of that area moved into a park. Let's give that to the Oak Creek High School. Let them do some of their building with the projects that they're doing. Let that be a green space. Let Oak Creek make a statement and have the Oak Creek High School turn that into housing and recreation area that's completely green, off the grid. Let's be the example. Let's not just follow the leader on somebody who's leading us, you know, like I said, 87 houses on that small lot, that's just, I don't think you would want to live there. I wouldn't want to live there, that's just a little bit too tight. And again, the schools and my concerns are pretty much, I think, what everybody else has, the school, the congestion, the impact on the environment. I hope that you make the right decision and revise this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Stephens, 10724 Christina Court. I agree with every one of these things. I just think this is just way too many buildings on this piece of property. I mean, you add all this concrete, all these roads, all this, that water's got to go somewhere, and I don't care how big that retention pond is, it's not going to keep all the water out. And the other things is that now we have so much construction going on with FedEx, and you've got FedEx trucks coming up and down Howell now because of exits being closed. This is just not good for this neighborhood. I mean, it's just way, way, way too congested.
Thank you.
Sorry it took a while, it was the first one from the back, so it's kind of the way it is. Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Jeremy.
Doug, thanks. I live, my name is Scott Corral, and I live at 337 East Elm Road, so the very top right unit, I live just beyond that. My deck will look straight into that unit. My neighbors to the west have the two units next to that, that they will be looking directly into. I hear what everybody's saying, and to tell you the truth, I also understand that in the interest of progress, something needs to be done with that property. I get it. But there isn't a reason why we couldn't either have it as a green space, have it as a recreational park. There are things that can be done with that property and those units that don't have to interrupt our peace and tranquility. That's why we bought the properties that we did. I'm one of the newer residents in there, bought my home in October of 2017. Love it. Love the reasons why I bought it, love the house, love what I had behind it, which was peace and tranquility. I'd like to see that continue. But again, this isn't up to me. We all sit here trying to tell you guys, hey, this is our lives that you guys are really in charge of. We hope that you will take our words into consideration so that we can maintain our peace and tranquility. If not with a green space, then hopefully with something else that can help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Carol Magstresto. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Carol Magstresto, 10520 South Howell Avenue. I agree with Nicole. I'd like to question also the common council members that voted for this, if they had that in their backyard, if they would like to have that in their backyard. Nobody sitting up there, I think, would like to be looking at that. And throughout the years, watching developers come from out of state, from Chicago, and developers that built condo projects, even in St. Francis, they hired management companies, and management companies don't follow through. They're going to be in Chicago, the management company here, they don't even know, will not be taking responsibility to take care of these properties. And once you get a three-bedroom unit for rent, it brings in a lot of different type of clientele, no matter what the rent is. And that's been a known fact. And that's going to affect all these people, everybody in the neighborhood. Built a beautiful town square, and it's all going to go downhill with this type of stuff going on in Oak Creek.
Thank you.
Erin Podal, 340 East Drexel Avenue. This is not in my backyard, but it's happening in my city. I'm a victim of the wonderful Drexel Town Square that went up and all the crimes, the crime that has happened since that went up around my house, to my family, to my neighbors, brings in lots and lots of unsavory people, and I hate to say that, but it has. I have the Gables Apartments surrounding my back acreage. East of me is a monstrosity of fancy apartments that many people can't afford. West of me are not one, but two apartment complexes and a hotel. Building after building, apartment complex after complex, strip malls, restaurants, keep going up. Not only have you used up an extraordinarily high amount of available green space, you have displaced fox, coyote, deers, hawks, eagles, owls. I even had a huge painted turtle walking down East Drexel in the middle of the road. I have one question. When is it going to be enough?
Thank you. Holly Vancelka.
Holly Vancelka, 1140 East Summers Drive. My concern is the schools. I have seven grandchildren in Oak Creek, and I see the overcrowding. And we don't build any more schools, but we keep building more housing. Are these kids, where are they supposed to learn? It's unbelievable. I went to an eighth grade graduation for East Middle last week, and I had a park way over by the community center because there's too many people. When is it going to stop? Just like the person said before me, it's too much. We've lived here for 25 years. I'm ready to leave. I can't stand it. You're crawling along on Howell Avenue, you can't get from point A to point B because so much traffic. It's really getting too much. And that apartment complex on Drexel, it's like, I can't believe my eyes. It's like too much. And this is too much, too. It's just, it's got to stop. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Vanderhee, 703 East Randy Road, Georgetown Commons. Obviously, I agree with a lot of this stuff. I also am a landlord and do rent properties for 20 years, and it's really a crapshoot. You get good people, you get bad people. It doesn't matter how much you charge, there's a reason people rent. I think the development actually is nice-looking. I think there's a need for it, I just don't think this is the location for it. All of us have moved into this neighborhood for the sole reason of getting away from rentals, getting into a nice area, getting into an area that has trees behind us, a quiet neighborhood, and it is a quiet neighborhood. I just think this is too much for that area. The construction, you're talking years of construction. You're going to have dust blowing for years, you're going to be sitting in your backyard and just have this dust cloud all the time. I've seen it with building Stella and Chewies and stuff, living there. I actually like Drexel Town Square, so I'm not against that. I like coming down here. I think the property values right around that will go down. It's going to be harder for those people to sell their houses. I don't think a lot of us are really concerned of how they're paying for it. Like, do us go in depth with that? Drainage, I'm not really worried about. It's just too much for that area. It needs a different place for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Peterson. You will pass. Thank you. Arden Dagner. Come on up, Arden.
Arden Dagner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I was here at the Plan Commission Hearing, and I completely agree with Commissioner Seapert, who said that this might be a good idea, but the selected location is not right for the development. Consider the problems that this, as it was said before, this condominium association is going to encounter. Consider the problems that you as a council presently deal with, the 5th Avenue Trailer Court and the College Avenue Trailer Court, all manufactured homes. But the piece de resistance is the manufactured home court at Forest Hill and College Avenue. It too was a manufactured court, home development. It too was supposed to, what is it? In wintertime, it's a blight. Every time the snow wants to run off because they don't have any basements like this, surely they've got nine-foot ceilings, but don't have any basements. And lo and behold, the snow runoff runs right into the front door because it has to be access for the disabled. Now, in addition to that, as Commissioner Seapert mentioned to me, to have houses without, as has been mentioned before, without any trees, without any garden places, without, and with only 12 feet to 15 feet between homes, how can there be any privacy? This does not fit into Oak Creek, as Commissioner Seapert voted against it, and I am seconding his motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, got to be a lot faster than I expected it to. Got like a million people, I figured.
Name an address, please.
Mark Ganey, my current address is 10068 South MacIntosh Lane. Just for the record, it's worth, I think it's worth noting, I've been an Oak Creek resident for going on 17 years, 18 years. I've built four houses in Oak Creek, one of which was at 351 East Elm Road, so right next to this place. Sold that place about two years ago. Got two properties, or I had two properties about a mile away from that, and MacIntosh Lane, for those of you that aren't aware, is probably another mile and a half away. I don't have a problem with that chunk of land being developed. We always knew that at some point it would, it was part of the reason why I sold my house on Elm, because I didn't know exactly what was going to go there. Was hoping it was going to be a gas station or something like that. Didn't know, because we knew that the park was, the industrial park was going down at the end of the road, so we figured it was just a matter of time before the farmer was able to sell that place. The biggest issue I personally have with it is, I don't have any problem with the development, I have a problem with it being modular homes. I own a modular home on a lot way up north that we use for hunting. I try, my modular- I try, my modular homes paid off, and at one point, we tried to pull a, uh, essentially a second mortgage on the place so that we could build an outlot. Uh, a bank doesn't treat a modular home the same way. So regardless of how nice you make it look, and ours looks nice, um, it, it still isn't the same as a regular single-family home. That particular place, given what's around there, given everything, that, all the homes around there are single-family homes, they should be single-family homes if you're going to develop it. Places like that should be near other apartment complexes, other places that are of similar type, and then they wouldn't necessarily have the impact on the, on the property values that that would have, on the property values directly east-west, you know, even mine, uh, a couple miles away. That's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, this will be the second call. Anybody wishing to speak? Please, up to the podium, sir.
Hello, my name is Alex Ferreira, I'm at 431 East Jordan Lane. Uh, this is a slump. You can't see it any other way. It's a total slump. There's too many houses, uh, together. Uh, yes, you know, you guys did a great job in this center, in the town square, I love it. And, but this is not, not what, um, our late Mayor Bolander said. He said that he wanted a gateway to Oak Creek. That's not the gateway to Oak Creek that he said he wanted. So, you know, if you go with, with this, I am going to put up my house for sale, because no, this, this will not. I will not be putting up with, the renters are going to come in. I rent, I'm a landlord also, and out of 10 or so tenants in the last three years, I've had to take to court six people owing me money. And that's what you're going to have with all these, uh, uh, companies that were going to try to rent. You know, I'm thinking, I don't know where the hell, or where your brain is, on this. You know, I, I really hate to disrespect people, but this is not it. You need to plan on something better, or, I just don't know what we're going to do. I think that, um, you're going to find the cops, councilly coming in, two, three cops, day in and day out, you're going to see, uh, the emergency people coming in, um, there're going to be a lot of fights in there. It's a slump. And Chicago people love to create slumps. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this will be the third and final call. Ann Hogan.
Ann Hogan, 10471 South Katy Drive. Been an Oak Creek resident for 25 years now. Uh, two, two teenagers at Oak Creek High School. I've lived in two different homes, one directly across from the development here, and now one on Katy Drive. When I first moved here, it was mostly country land. Um, coincidentally, I ran in the first run to build the Oak Creek Community Center, when it was just fundraising runs. So I've been coming to this area of the city for quite some time. It's really grown, uh, quickly and pretty much exponentially in the last 10 years. The traffic patterns have gotten pretty unbearable. The place, I mean, transportation, the placement of FedEx directly across Howell from where I live, has really created an unbearable burden at particular times of the day and night. Now with, uh, all the development going on on I-84, this is, Howell Avenue has become an arterial road, an alternate transport, um, other than the I system, because the I system is a nightmare. Uh, now you're going to put a multifamily unit in that small area, you're going to add another 100, at least, vehicles in and out of there. Um, and not to mention the burden on the, on the schools. I mean, I went door-to-door, when, with the referendum to, to, uh, build another elementary school, because we had kids in, in closets, we had counselors in closets in the elementary schools. So, we, as taxpayers, knew the right thing to do is to build another elementary school. That was a 20-year plan. You start putting these things up, we're going to be building another elementary school. I'm with all of these people. I take great pride in my property, it's, it's, it's a lot of property, I spend hours on it, and I don't see that kind of investment in, coming from individuals who, who will, um, rent those properties. And that's my concern, is the impact of that on my property values, my investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Naveed.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Naveed Singh Rajanwal. I bought a house in August, 10715 South Christina Court. You guys are no better than us. Why we need a company from Chicago to develop this land? Because, we, we just want to ask you this thing. Is in Wisconsin, we don't have no people to develop this thing? To make a park or any for, for the kids, like a baseball park, or recreation, anything? Why do we have to hire a company from Illinois to come to Wisconsin and do this thing? In Wisconsin, we don't have nobody, sir? And I pay, I bought that house just for that reason, the community. I got three kids. All this community is right here. They, they, they welcome with the open arms, you know, like, first time, we celebrated, uh, what you call Halloween, Christmas, everything. Even the Oak Creek school kids come and sing for a Christmas carols, first time in my life. You know, I respect, I respect you guys, but this is not needed to be done over there, especially from Illinois. Why, why, why we, why you guys hiring these guys to come and develop this thing? Why not, you know, Wisconsin, we don't have a people to develop the land? This is our land, not their land. They can go and do it in Illinois, Chicago, wherever they want to do it. They can do whatever, many buildings they can build. But why they are building in our, in our community, in our neighborhood? That's my concern. And I oppose that, sir.
Great, thank you. Uh, last speaker, uh, that dropped is, is off, uh, I'm going to kill you. Mr. Singh? Come on up.
Hello, sir.
How are you?
Everybody, good evening. Uh, I want to say, I'm, my name is Sukdev Khalsa, and I'm belong to the sacred community. My address is, uh, 10759 South Christina Court, Oak Creek. I buy this house back in 2007. I've been almost like 12, 13 years, because I was living in Milwaukee, right by downtown area and Market University, and then I moved from there to College Avenue, because I want to go away from some different people, rental people. Because you see that, when they have rental people, they have a lot of problem, just like some fellows say here, it's not easy to hold the picture up right here. It's not, this is not true. Even, I know if the Oak Creek need, Oak Creek City need more money, tax, I'm agreed to, I can pay more tax for like maybe thousand, thousand dollar, or even few hundred dollar more house, they can have to pay. But they don't want to be this congestions in the, our neighborhood. My house is right front of this lot, this land. Literally, maybe just like me and you have a difference, like that much difference. So, we want to, just like a lot of other people say, the single-family home, come there is good, or any kind of, like, uh, the sports, or something, or which is the neighborhood like it. I know City need more money, or something, some way, we already, I was starting $5,900 tax, and now I'm paying to almost seven grand for the year. Because I like neighborhood, our neighborhood is very quiet and nice, and keep clean for other each, like, like a family. So we want to same relation, and we want to see the, the backyard, like my other neighborhood say, we want to see back green, and see the people, everything is open. And other thing I mentioned, people traveling from like Conosha or Seane, Caledonia or somewhere, they driving 55 speed over 45. And the traffic is already too much, when you drive from here to the airport, you need to be 20 minutes, because the neighborhood passing, it's more traffic. And if they put this house as more, they may be like double or triple time traffic. And anybody over live there, why they are, because they paying high tax and good living, and there is a good kids, because only the thing is a good neighborhood, and good Oak Creek City. So please, I request to, something more, not this complex. Not like that many houses, for the one unit, for the one spot, there is no any rental property for, especially the home. They somewhere buying a lot more property available nearby other rental place. So I request your whole communities and all my neighborhood, please say no for that complex. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Tim Leverance.
Hello, hello. My name is Tim Leverance.
You can move that thing off, pretty tall.
My name is Tim Leverance, and I live at 830 East Elm Road, Oak Creek. And, um, I guess I, I'm here to essentially challenge the rezoning that apparently is required in order to do this, make this new development happen. Um, I've been an Oak Creek resident for 42 years, and have lived in two different homes in Oak Creek, and I love it here. And, when I, uh, the, the property we have is, isn't right next door to this, but my comment on that is that we have a homogeneous community of homes, all that are in this area. And, the, the people that are adjacent to this, my neighbors that are adjacent, they're having their, their worlds turned upside down by this, uh, development. And, the way I look at it, is when we built our home, we had to follow all kinds of rules as far as the size of the lot, easements for fire protection, easements for water drainage. And, when my wife and I, uh, looked at the, uh, in fact, we didn't really see the plan, but when, when they said the number of units, we were wondering how they could shoehorn that many units in that amount of space. And I, I did notice on the presentation, when they were showing the exterior views of the model homes that they're going to have here, that the images were surrounded by a, a large amount of space and green space. And looking at this plan, it reminds me more of, of what you would see in inner Milwaukee, where a neighbor can open up his window and shake hands with his next-door neighbor. So, um, I, I guess the, the point I want to come to is that, uh, I feel that, for people to have made the investments that we did, following all the rules of zoning that we had to do, um, it's a betrayal to us and the investment we made, to have somebody come along late in the game and say, hey, change this zone, we can put this up here now. It's, it's a betrayal to us. It's like, it's like working at a place all your life, and then they suddenly say, oh, sorry, we've canceled the retirement plan. And I guess that's alls I have to say. I'd, I'd like to see the zoning stay intact, so that all the homes have, uh, continue to have a homogeneous, uh, neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, come on up.
Hey, I'm Mark Luther, 589 East Randy Road. Uh, live essentially right just down the street from this, so, I agree with a lot of what a lot of the other folks have said, really just echo a lot of their, their thoughts. Um, I would challenge, as far as some of the statistics, as far as like declining homeownership goes, um, and where that's coming from, I think that there's a lot of, um, I guess the younger generation, right, is renting, and I know that there's a lot of, uh, studies out there as far as millennials not buying as many homes, things like that. I, I guess I would challenge that a lot of those folks are going to tend to, I guess, rent more in the city areas, as opposed to out in the country. They tend to want to be more in an urban area, right? Regentification of the city, things like that. Very concerned about, uh, the idea of no, um, no, I guess, floor, as far as what the, um, the base rent will be for these homes. Somebody had mentioned earlier about, uh, condo developments, uh, not getting funded, and then the second half of that development going to low-income housing, things like that. Uh, that's definitely a big concern. And then, again, just echo the sentiments of, it's a lot of people, um, to put in that small area, and, um, really, uh, I guess, just concerned about the safety of that area. A lot of small kids at home, uh, want to keep the street safe for them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, that was the third and final call. We'll now close the public hearing, uh, and we will go to, what's my train of thought here? Item eight, and that is consideration of the ordinance. Um, Andrew, you want to start us off?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to provide some general comments for everybody, and I really want to express the, uh, or differentiate the roles here in the decision-making process of the city among the staff, and what, what kind of our role is, versus the role of the com- common council when we consider these things. Uh, but first, I want to say, thank you. Uh, this can take on an adversarial role, just because of the nature of kind of us being up here and you being in the audience, and what is the city doing to us, uh, what is the staff doing to us? And, and although there was a little bit of that, and that's just human nature, uh, keep in mind, we are where we are in the process, and that is, the city staff and the city council are also reacting to this proposal. So we're, we, we've had time to, uh, to make it better, we've had time to improve it, and we'll get into, to some of those improvements. Uh, but we are here reacting to a proposal for a, a development on, on a piece of property in Oak Creek. So, this input that you gave tonight is critical, and it's a critical part of the process. So, a, a little bit, um, disappointed, however, in, uh, some of the sentiments, uh, on kind of the renter versus owner dynamic. Uh, I don't think you will see a more aligned city leadership than we are in, in trying to debunk those myths, uh, particularly in regards to property maintenance and aesthetic, and, you know, did, did some checking, and I have statistics in the city. Our biggest offenders from a code compliance standpoint and a nuisance standpoint are single-family, uh, developments in, in the community, uh, by and large, overwhelmingly. So it's about that management aspect, making sure that is a strong, uh, strong outfit, making sure that the city has a, an expectation that, you know, codes be maintained and that we actually enforce those as well. We've had very good success in this community, uh, being a relative newcomer, I am objective on this, uh, very good success in managing multifamily developments. Uh, we, we have good owners, um, and, you know, presumably, um, good tenants, too. But it's all about the enforcement piece of that. So when we, when we review, when we receive and review a proposal for anything in the city of Oak Creek, the staff has a role to play, of course. Uh, we take a look at it more on a technical level, so, uh, zoning, uh, traffic, stormwater management, all of the things, all of the questions that you've raised, uh, density, appropriate fit, most importantly. And, and we do that, we have been doing that with this proposal to make it better. I think Jeremy had mentioned at the beginning, originally this didn't have sidewalks, it now has sidewalks at the insistence of the city. Uh, and, and so on down the line. Uh, we've addressed, and tried to address a lot of what, uh, we know the residents will have expected us to address. And that's not to say that, uh, we have a, a technical blinder on where we're simply focused on the technical aspects. We are attuned to what we expect out of the adjacent neighborhoods, uh, when, when we go through this review. Uh, we also look at things that are guiding the work that we do as proposed by, as mandated by the city council, and one of those is really key in this community, and that's our strategic action plan. You can see some of the, some of the high-level stuff of our strategic action plan on the back of the wall. But, there's, there's really critical things in there, and I want to cite a couple, because that is my mandate, and that's the staff's mandate. And that is, uh, handling a demand that we know exists for single-family development in this, this community. Uh, we look at this proposal through the lens of that community goal, as established by the elected officials, uh, and, 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 of course, we're doing that. Uh, we also... Uh, we also really want to be a safe welcoming and engaged community. Uh, we are engaged thanks to, to you all here, uh, tonight. That's a good sign of that. Uh, but also welcoming. We want as a strategic objective in this community for folks that want to live in this community, hopefully grow in this community, maybe in the future, invest even more fully in the community, raising families and, and what have you. We want them to have the opportunity to be able to do that in the city of Oak Creek. And this particular proposal also kind of furthers that strategic goal we have because this is a product that we don't have in our housing portfolio here in the city of Oak Creek. And i- it's, it's an intriguing one. Uh, and I assure you, it's not the only one in the United States of America. Uh, I understand that it may be the first one in the city of Oak Creek, but this is a very popular trend around the country. So we also look at things like economics and we do not want to make an economic argument to you of we, uh, we think the taxes and the impact fees are great. We first look at, well, I'll back up. Economics are a consideration, but they're not, um, a major consideration and they're, they're not the most important consideration. Clearly we have to look at what those impacts are, both positive and negative on economics. So that's the staff's role, uh, in a nutshell. And, and my job as the city administrator, I'm not elected. These, I work for these, these seven and they are the elected officials. So the staff comes at these things a little bit differently and has a little different lens to view these when we make recommendations. If you had to sum up my job for this, this community, it's to be the chief advisor, chief policy advisor to these seven. So they have a little bit of a different role though. They of course review and question and better the recommendations that the staff gives them. Uh, they look and, they look at and review and consider the committee work in this place, in this case, the plan commission, the testimony that was there, the work put in by the plan commission members, the questions asked. They, as all, as does the staff, reviews guidance documents like comprehensive plan, future land use maps, uh, those types of things. Zoning in this case is an important one. Uh, they also look at the strategic plan. As I had mentioned, uh, this does further a few of the goals they have stated for the community, uh, in our strategic plan. And importantly, they take citizen input as we did tonight. And that's a, an important part of the process because it makes, typically makes the proposals a little better. Uh, we may, we are not the smartest people in the room. Uh, we don't know everything. And through this dialogue that you've given tonight, it makes the council consider different things. However, as you can see, the council has a diverse number of stakeholders to consider. And one important stakeholder that we're not talking, we haven't talked much about is, is the property owner that owns this piece of property. And they have a right to have the council review proposals that come before them for their property. They have the right to be able to sell their property. And I think, I don't, I don't want that to be lost on everybody in here because the council also has to consider that couple or that family and what they wanted to do there in their, in that long-term investment in their property. So although that's not paramount, what they want to do with their property, they should be able to do. It also has to make sense, uh, from all the other standpoints that we're, we're talking about here and, and what, and, and the things you've raised. Very little progress will be made in any community if, if the people elected to make decisions on behalf of the community ask the adjacent neighbors if this is something that they want. Clearly this is not something that you want. This council and other councils has to ask the question of, we know that they don't want it, but is it the right thing for the, for the greater community? There's thirty-five thousand people that aren't represented here. And that's the lens that they have to view, they have to take into consideration the staff's opinion, your opinion, the property owner's rights and ability to, to retire, uh, potentially. In the end, what we as a staff come back to is land use. And this is a single family land use adjacent to another single family land use. Currently zoned for two-family. So we could have a, a rather equivalent density and not have to change the zoning or really even consider anything, uh, like we are tonight. Somebody could come in and do two, duplex, two-family development. So I don't want that to be lost on, on everybody either. Just to, to, to wrap up here, a couple of things that I wanted to personally address because I've been looking into them um, in regards to kind of the integrity or quality of modular homes. I'm not quite sure of the gentleman's experience that spoke about, uh, his, his cabin up north. Uh, I had the opportunity to speak with our building officials here in the city. They have absolutely no issues about the integrity of these homes from a construction standpoint. Uh, they will, they, they think in, in fact, the way they're constructed could be more consistent and even better quality. Uh, they do plan on touring the, the plant if this moves forward. Uh, they do, they do plan on doing that. But they get the same, you know, good housekeeping seal of approval, the UDC seal that any other, any of your homes have. Um, so I wanted to make sure that that was, um, something that you knew. Um, also there's the, I, I kind of addressed this earlier, but there's this question of us being a testing ground. And admittedly, the developer was one of our first questions, where have you built a community like this elsewhere? And admittedly, they haven't. Uh, but just to provide any level of comfort I can, this isn't a new, this isn't a new concept that Oak Creek is pioneering in, in the United States. Uh, question of property values always comes up in this setting. I had the opportunity to speak with the assessor. Certainly the, the, the product has to be a good product, right? But the sheer presence of a rental property or a rental product adjacent to a single family doesn't automatically mean anything. Now, there's no crystal ball. There's, there's no, there's no crystal ball.
He has a floor.
There's no crystal ball. We can't ever tell anybody, any, any development adjacent to you is going to do X, Y, or Z for property values. But in his opinion, it, it, once this project gets stabilized, it could have a net, not, no net impact or even a positive impact uh, to, to the adjacent properties. So school district and overcrowding, just real quickly. I know, uh, the, the school district, at least per the school board, is very supportive of the city's development efforts in recent years. And I know that they're seeking enrollment. So, you know, I think they're game planning, obviously they're, they are, they are, um, you know, they're, they're planning their capital improvement plan around hopefully growing their enrollment as a community. So in sum, I just wanted you to know that there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that go into these decisions that we make. And, you know, I wanted to express appreciation for your comments here because it is a, a very integral part of this process as the council weighs this decision moving forward.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, councilman, I know you've been waiting a long time. Does anybody want to start?
I'll, I'll start, yeah. Uh, Alderman Dugniak, third district. Uh, Andrew, you hit it on the head saying that we don't have all the answers. And that's why I have the question. Um, want to thank all of the residents of that fifth district area for coming out tonight, for being passionate about your, your neighborhood and your community. And, and as Andrew had mentioned, uh, I mean, we make decisions based upon information that we receive and input that we've received, you know, this evening as well. So on to the, the questions. Jeremy, this can wait until later, but the very first thing is Jeremy, why Oak Creek? And we can get to that in, uh, a bit later on down the road. Andrew, you hit on three points that I had notes on. The legal right of the property owner to sell their property. Um, is there any type of potential legal ramifications if for some reason this doesn't get passed or it's zoned, uh, that the developer would back out of the project? I guess, you know, that would be one. So it's the, the legal right of that, of that property owner to sell their property. Um, is there information or examples to support the claims of declining property values? I mean, in, in order for us to make those decisions, we don't want to negatively impact. That's not our jobs here to make your lives miserable in Oak Creek. It's, it's, you know, to make this, uh, the place that you've lived in and, and always want to live in. So when comments come out such as our, our property values are gonna decline, crime is going to increase and modular homes are slum buildings. Is there information to support those claims? If there is, then certainly I know which way I would vote. But I have to have information that tells me, oh yes, here are examples of, of what's happened in areas where a certain type of development, uh, example of developments causing damage or having damaging effects to surrounding neighborhoods. I need that information. I need to know about that. Is that out there? Is that a valid claim? So, you know, obviously, maybe we have a lot more work ahead of us to, to find out if, in fact, the, some of these statements, you know, do have, you know, history of, of saying yes, that this does take place or there is no supporting evidence in, in any of those. But that, and I think my colleagues on the council need that information as well to, to make, you know, an educated opinion. Um, so I, I, I certainly understand, you know, uh, just the, the feelings of the residents. I've been a twenty-four year resident of Oak Creek as well. The area where I first built my home, I'm still in the home. Their north, south, east, west was all open land, open property. It is not that any longer. Everyone, north of us, south of us, east of us, west of us, has all been developed. I can honestly say and it's, you know, won't probably make you feel any better, but Oak Creek is still an incredible community and our neighborhood is still an incredible community despite that development. But if there is information out there that tells us that what's going to take place there is going to, to have these negative effects, then certainly we'll take that, or I will take that into consideration on my decision. But is, is that information out there? Doug or anyone?
Mr. Mayor, uh, just in response to your second question, Alderman, regarding the legal rights of the property owner, certainly, uh, the city and zoning is, uh, is based on the city's future land use map, which is part of their adopted comprehensive plan. And, and I, I just want to make a clarification, the property currently is owned agricultural, but the future land use map, which was adopted as part of the comprehensive plan, shows that it's two-family residential. It serves as a transition between the neighborhood and the, the business park. And that's, I mean, it was, and just to maybe go back and clarify a statement that I heard earlier, I mean, that was never going to be a park. There is a park in the middle of that, that park still exists, but that is a business park and for some time has been scheduled to be a business park. But back to the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. State of Wisconsin law says that your decisions as a council, as a community, have to be consistent with your comprehensive plan and your future land use map. So in essence, if someone came in here, uh, and, and obviously there's extenuating circumstances in all cases. But in general, if someone came in here and says, I would like to rezone this property to RD one, which is a two-family residential in accordance with your future land use map and your comprehensive plan, the really, it's, the burden of proof is on to the, the city to, to, uh, explain why that shouldn't happen. And there are some, there are some legal rights attached to that. I won't get into that. If, and if Melissa wants to get into that, that's fine. But in essence, I mean, the development decisions that are made by the city need to be consistent with their comprehensive plan and future land use map. And that shows two-family residential. And you may say that, well, this isn't two-family. This is, these are single family condos. You know, so I mean, and the fact that it's less intense, whether that imparts some, some development rights on the property owner, I can't answer that question. I can only say that in the future land use map allows two-family residences. This is a single family, uh, densities are roughly appro- roughly the same, if not less than would be permissible under a two-family zoning. Uh, the other issues with respect to aesthetics, what have you, certainly those are under the purview of the, the common council and probably more appropriately the plan commission. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention with respect to the landowner's rights and the city's responsibilities for making decisions in conformance with this comprehensive plan.
I, I have one more question, then obviously I, I know my colleagues have questions as well. So, um, item number nine would be to consider the ordinance. Um, so tonight is, is just the approval of a rezoning. Does that then approve the project? Or are there terms and conditions that the planning commission may have based on input from the neighbors and based on, you know, uh, the cooperation from the developer that need to be met in order for that project to go through?
Thank you. And, and as I kind of began my statements, I kind of alluded to, uh, the nature of the procedure that's maybe followed again at the council's discretion this evening. Typically under a, when the zoning is before the council in a plan unit development, it comes to the council with a recommendation from the plan commission. At that point in time, the plan commission also has seen what we call conditions and restrictions and a general development plan, which is a separate document that regulates that plan unit development. Again, density, aesthetics, lighting, landscaping, stormwater management, uh, traffic, maintenance, uh, and, and a number of other things. Construction phasing, what have you. Given the fact that this came to the council in essence on a three, three tie, which is, again, the resolution or the recommendation was not approved, those conditions and restrictions, that general development plan was not forwarded to the common council. So should the comm- council choose to adopt the ordinance, the appropriate thing to do then would be to remand that portion of it, those conditions and restrictions, that general development plan back to the plan commission for their review and recommendation. At which time, after that recommendation, we come back to the council and revise this ordinance to incorporate those documents.
Thank you, Doug.
Just, I think it's important to, to note though that Doug, you know, had stated it, there's a pretty finite set of things that the conditions and restrictions usually cover. Um, you know, that's, maybe you want to cite those. It's not just anything that we can think of. It's pretty much germane to the, uh, plan that was, that's put forward.
Sure. I mean, for, for instance, I mean, we heard a lot of talk of versus rentals versus, versus ownership here. I mean, I think there might be a misconception that the city can say, well, you can't rent this out. That's not the case in most, most circumstances. In fact, and I don't know that I should be saying this, but I mean, there is no restriction about someone renting out their house. And I mean, in fact, some houses are rented out and probably more than we, we think or more than we know. We can regulate square footage, how the property looks, you know, utilities, standards for construction of infrastructure, landscaping plans, number of other things. But I, I don't think, and I wouldn't want to leave the, this council or this, this gathering with the impression that this general development plan and conditions and restrictions can incorporate any and all things into them.
Thank you, Doug.
Is that rich?
Yeah.
Um, Steve, anything down there?
Yes. Uh, Alderman Krokowski, first district. Um, I took a lot of notes tonight. I've been, uh, I did have an opportunity to meet with Jeremy. Provided me with, uh, some background material on the, uh, on the proposed development. And Jeremy, when it's time, when we're all done, I do have a couple of questions, so I don't want to have you come back and forth. I mean, Rich has some and I got some, so others might have some too, so we'll hold off on that. But what, what bothers me, and I appreciate everyone who came here tonight, and I am particularly pleased with those of you who are sitting there and listening to our comments, just like we sat and listened to your comments. Okay? So whether or not you like what we say or we liked what you said, we have to appreciate each other's opinions. And the city administrator, um, was very good in, in, in pointing out a, a number of items that, that I was going to talk about. And, you know, I made, I made some comments on this. This was taken off the Facebook page about some of the problems that are perceived that this, this might create. And as Alderman Dugniak said, a lot of it is just that, opinions. Because we don't have any background material to support the decrease in property values. And of the apartment complexes that have recently gone up in my district, there hasn't been any decrease in the property values that are adjacent to the developments. And we had a long discussion about this one development and it's very nice. It has not significantly increased the traffic because the traffic issues on Drexel in Pennsylvania don't radiate from one particular apartment complex. It's radiating from issues west, the freeway construction, uh, thirteenth, I mean, everything else going on. So that isn't the cause. So that isn't the cause. Increase in crime. I, I will say that I was personally offended by the citizen who got up here and called this a slum project, because when you're talking about the rent that they intend to charge, it's not, it's, it's more than my monthly mortgage, but I choose to have a house. People today are choosing to have apartments. So the fact that the claim that police and fire are going to be in there, day after day after day, when our statistics show that there's more problems with single-family homes and rental communities, and that came up at other discussions with regards to apartment complexes. We, I've been to these complexes and talked to the res, the management folks about issues like this, and there's no problems. I mean, they're very nice, well-managed properties, the ones that I've been to. And it says, "They want us to bear all the negative impacts of this property so the rich can get richer." I, I don't see the rich getting richer. I don't see a, a developer out of Chicago coming up to Wisconsin to develop something up here, any more negative than a developer from northern Wisconsin coming down here, or downtown Milwaukee coming into Oak Creek. Again, we have private property, a developer wants to develop the land, and that's, that's what we have. So we don't have any history of prior developments to support any of the claims on the flyer. Again, it's already been mentioned, there's no city money involved, it's already been answered. We're talking over a $22 million development. Private streets, we talked about, there's no impact on city services, at least the cost, right? There's no street plowing, no lights that have to be taken care of. As regard, in regards to the school district, you know, as the city admin, city administrator says, we, we look at all this stuff, we look at development in the city, and we know that there's going to be an impact on every single bit of city services that we have. Whether it's creating parks, and the park's going to have to be maintained, whether it is a subdivision, and we have to maintain the streets, and all of that will bring in, hopefully, families that will have children, that will go to the Oak Creek Franklin Joint School District facilities. I don't think we're in a position where we can say, "I'm sorry, we don't want to build this, because we're going to have more students in the school district." I think that's irresponsible of us to say that. It's going to happen. The school district needs to deal with that. And I'm not saying that to be argumentative, I'm saying it's a fact of life. The city is growing in many different ways, and that includes more students in the schools. That is their issue to properly deal with, okay? It's, as much as I know it could impact me as a taxpayer, I can't say, "We're not going to do this, because we're going to have to build another middle school." I, I can't, I can hear you, I can accept that argument, but I can't deal with that, because that's, the school district is their own separate little government entity, and they deal with those issues. So, again, I'm not trying to be argumentative. We know that somebody was going to do something with this property, the private owner wants to get it developed. It, it's often been said, "I don't want this in my backyard. I want to see the nature, I want to see the deer, I like the quietness of my community, I don't want to be able to walk out my back door," and I'm not singling out "you, sir." I'm saying we've had that argument and statements before. But the bottom line is, it's private property. And if the, and if the person wants to put in a trucking terminal, if it was properly zoned, what recourse would those residents have? You're going to get a trucking terminal, you're going to get a tool and die place, you're going to get a 24/7 operation. Not particularly in this development, but when these things come up, something's going to be built there. And the, the bottom line is, the city goes through a lot, a lot of time and sweat to make sure that all of this is done right, that it's, that it's going to be inspected, it fits into the city plan, and that it's done to a high quality that we expect in Oak Creek. These are not slums. This is not a trailer park. We're not going to get the type of people that a lot of you folks are concerned about, because these aren't cheap places. Now, I talked to Jeremy about what the value of these homes would be if they weren't what they're proposed to be. He told me that if this was going to be a regular subdivision with these homes, if they were going to be sold, they're going to be somewhere, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, $350,000 to $400,000 homes. Okay? Wait, whoa, whoa, I, I listen to you, I listen to you, I listen to your comments, don't interrupt me.
Please, no speaking from the floor.
Okay? Those would be the value of the homes if they were building them. So they're not slums, and they're not trailer park homes. Now, Howell Avenue, is it, is it a mess? It is, because it's an alternate route for I-94 during the freeway construction. Everybody suffers because of that freeway construction, and that's, that is what the state designated Howell Avenue as, an alternate I-94. We, you know, orange barrels is, is, is the new state bird of Wisconsin, and that's just the way it is. We have it everywhere, and it's just going to be like that forever, until all this construction is done. And then Rich made a comment about the, the, the records or the history regarding issues like this, and I think we'd have to look, if there were any type of records or any type of documents that support the claims, how would they affect, be affected by a development of this cost? You know, if, if you have lower rental units versus high rental units, you see where I'm saying? We don't have those, and if we did, would they be for the type of development that is being proposed? Isn't there a park in Oakview business?
Yeah, we establish that.
Yep, there's a small park there. Okay, yeah. And I think the retention pond is required. Somebody made a comment about a retention pond. Isn't that required with the development? Have to have them? Have to have them. So I think that's, those are my comments. I appreciate you listening to me, I listen to you, and, thank you.
Go ahead, Mike. Alderman Mike Tolman, Fourth District. Could we just get a clarification on that, on the value on those properties, Doug? Because I thought I heard you say 273? Was it, was that the, was that the mean? It wasn't over 3, was it?
So, so based, and based on, on the numbers given in the development report, the total value of development divided by the 85 lots came up with $273,000.
Okay.
Building cost. Building cost.
Assess value. Okay. So how does that compare to the, the general mean assessed value in that area? Wasn't it pretty close?
Yeah, in the, in that neighborhood, and certainly, I mean, there's no, you type to 10 different people, so they say the neighborhood's 10 different things, but just in general, the area north, north of Elm and east to Shepherd, I believe, it's about $275,000, maybe a little, some change. It is, I'll show you the numbers.
Okay. So in essence, you're saying it's kind of a matching value for the area surrounding it?
I'll, I'll let people draw their own conclusion based on that.
Is that a fair statement?
I think it's a fair statement, yes.
Okay. I've got, I've got a, one other question for you here. I'm going to yield my time to Alderman Gale, because I'm sure he's, he's got a lot more notes than I have, anyway. The, the recommendation here, if we go forward with this tonight, it mentions two-family in the recommendation. So are we opening up ourselves to, like, single-family footprints with, with two, all two stories if we, well, how does that play out?
So the, the base zoning based on the comprehensive plan, and which shows a two-family residential in the future land use map, would be for two-family. The essence of PUD or the plan unit development is that, that density can be translated into a, a unit count. In this case, you'd have the equivalent, roughly the equivalent unit count within a single-family development. So that's, that's where the plan unit development document comes in. So the base zoning, yes, would be RD1, which is duplexes, but the plan unit development and the conditions and restrictions of general development plan would specify that they're single-family homes.
Okay. I'm going to yield my time to Ken. Thank you.
Go next, Ken, or Chris?
I'll just, I just wanted to touch base on, we covered a lot at, at Plan Commission already, so, yeah, the only other thing that I wanted to point out, and I brought it up again tonight, was that, you know, going from the, the single fam, from two, you know, duplexes to single families, the density seems, you know, to be a lot out there, but again, it's not a two-family place, and I, that's why I'm in favor of it. And then, you know, the last thing is that, you know, the, the landowners, you know, they, if they want to sell, they get to sell.
Chris? Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank you all for showing up here. This is actually how this process is supposed to work. Motivated, dedicated residents of the districts that face these, these development proposals, I have the ability and the, and the right to organize themselves, to prepare themselves, to educate themselves up here in front of the various bodies that hold these hearings, state their case, and, and you go from there. You had the Planning Commission hearing a couple, almost a month ago, and, and the developer had the right to obviously to come to the common council and do this process as we are doing tonight. So we appreciate you being here and, and dedicating yourselves to the effort to make your voices heard. Common Council's job is obviously to weigh your input, weigh the, weigh the research from the staff, the, the developer's proposal, you know, along those lines, and align those with some kind of the things as Andrew spelled out with the, with the strategic plan objective we adopted a couple of years ago that kind of drives the city's vision forward, and that's really where we're at tonight, and we'll, we'll get on with that as we, as we wrap up a consideration of the ordinance here in, in just a few minutes. Just some comments from me, just in, in general, on the overall proposal, though. In terms of Oak Creek as a whole, you, you folks, many of you, I've been in the city since 93, I'm sure many of you have been here even longer than that, but as a whole, as a government, as, as an entity, as a body of, Alderman elected, we're all, any elected in Oak Creek is a part-timer, that's just the way we work, set up. So we do this, you know, we're, we're not making gobs of money doing this, we're doing this because we love our city, and we, we really value and treasure being a part of this whole process. Oak Creek has, has really, in the last, at least as long as I've been around, has really grown to become a desired destination, a destination of choice for, for developers, residential folks as a whole. You know, we, we had our building boom back in the 90s, that, that has kind of reemerged, that has reemerged to somewhat now as a multifamily kind of trend lately. We have had some significant units, high-value units added, they've been wildly successful in the past few years. In Steve's district, right here in the square, there's multifamily units going on at 27th Street, 27th Street right now, which we expect to be successful as well. And Phase 2 of Emerald Row was actually recently announced, received its funding, will be hopefully breaking ground in July, right across the street here for another addition to this particular project. But the city itself, I think, has curated, and it's a well-deserved reputation as a, as a destination of choice for not only residential, but developers. It is a great place to live, work, and do business, and we take great pride and great care in nurturing that, that, that reputation. The success and growth has really been driven, I think, from just being a part of it and witnessing staff, which is kind of the key to this whole thing, of really sound and strategic decision-making. You know, it's easy to kind of just go with the, kind of the wild passion and, you know, say no to this and yes to that, just on, kind of on whims, but really, to be patient and prudent and rational about the decisions is, is tough. It's, it's hard, it's hard work, it's, it's trusting work. You have to rely on your, on your colleagues here in the council to, to do their homework. And, you know, fortunately, we've been reasonably well-aligned in terms of the vision for the city moving forward, and I think it, as, I think this project is an estimate to the fact that we have done what is in the best interest of the city when, when all is said and done. In these, as far as these processes go, really, like I said, we're, we're a part-time, part-time elected body. The staff is, is entrusted to really to, to provide the guidance for the council to make its decisions. We have, you know, we have great leaders in our staff, from engineering, finance, community development, community relations, administration, inspection, up and down the board, water utility, they are, you folks are served by a great staff of folks who work for you, unheralded most of the time, unknown, but you are well-served by this community's employees. You know, we, and we trust our staff as a whole, because I said, we, we don't have the time or the, or the expertise to do these things, but to vet these proposals as they come forward, really to look at them financially, do they make sense? To look at them in terms of, do they make sense in terms of our, of our goals and, and the missions of, of the city as a whole, and where we want to be five and 10 and 15 and 20 years down the road? And really, are they additive to the community? It's important, you know, if they're not bringing something here, you know, why be doing it, really? It's silly, you know? You don't have to do something just because you have a proposal. We've seen that where things make sense, some things don't make sense. Sometimes you're just saying, "No." But if it makes sense, if it meets those goals, you know, if it's financially feasible, if it's additive to the community, it makes sense, depending on our goals and objectives, this council typically is going to do what it takes to move forward for our community to better our citizens. You know, in terms of this particular project, it is a private landowner, a private developer, privately funded. You know, some folks have called out Jeremy's affinity for Chicago, we won't hold against him in terms of Cubs, or Sox, or Bears, or whatever, but this council has not been prone to put blinders on when it comes to who wants to invest money in this community to make it better. Someone who wants to come to Oak Creek and spend $23 million to make my community better, I'm damn well going to listen to what they have to say. It's a lot of money. They're not charities, they're not doing this out of the goodness of their heart. They obviously are in this because they believe it's a sound project, it will make them the return on their investment for their investors, it will be additive to the community. So from that standpoint, we, we trust, you know, the process, that that's how it works out. In terms of the overall proposal, you know, I, I've heard a lot of you say that renters, homeowners, single-family, certain percentage of the population is choosing to live differently, whether we like it or not. You know, I have four kids, they're all in college or just graduated college, they think differently than I do, and retirees, retirees think differently than I do. People make choices, and it's really not ours to question why they make those choices. We, you know, it's, it's their life. They're doing what they're doing. Some are renting, some are paying a lot of money to rent, some are still building big houses, some are buying houses, but it is what it is. This is a development that, based on my full-time job, I see around the country, they do a lot of. It's not uncommon to do hundreds, thousands of these in various communities in terms of how these are set up. So this is not an unusual type of development, it's just unusual here. So from that standpoint, I think Andrew laid out fairly strongly why staff felt it's interesting from a, from a single-family standpoint, it meets a, a significant goal of the city. We had gone years without approving a single-family residential development in the community. We were starving for lots in the city. Nowhere for new residents to come here. You know, you can, new people to the city, you know, folks who want to move here, there's no place for them, for them to live, unless, you know, inventory is very low for houses for sale. Developers right now, in terms of the lots that can be developed, are very expensive. You have to save the, you know, the 10, 15, 20% down if you want to choose a traditional single-family lot and home package. So this is just a different way to live. It is not uncommon, gives them the flexibility, and like Andrew or whoever said, it gives opportunities for folks to really experiment. Is Oak Creek the right community for them? And it really allows them to stay here, move up the, the food chain in terms of, you know, potentially at some point then moving into a bigger single-family home, staying here and building roots and, and, you know, living out their lives here. I think this, this has a very strong chance that these folks are going to be great neighbors for the community, great neighbors for that neck of the woods. At some point, this community is going to be a lot bigger, whether we like it or not. You know, people talk about traffic and congestion now, you know, you look at the traffic or, you know, population projections for Oak Creek, and it's 50,000 that build out. So by 2050, we're going to have a lot more neighbors, whether we like it or not. So we have to strategically deal with that fact, and plan for that fact, and provide for those particular residents as they move forward. There's, there's been some question on, just in general, in terms of the math, in terms of single-family. on, just in general, in terms of the math, in terms of single-family rentals. I had Marty, the assessor, he's going to be here a little bit for a different, uh, a different item. He ran some numbers for me, and about 5% of the homes, single-family homes in Oak Creek are actually non-owner occupied rental. So, that's about 5%, one out every 20, whether you know it or not, you look around your neighborhoods, one out every 20 houses is occupied by a non-owner. So, it's, it's rented. So, it's, it's going on, whether you know it. It's just part of the way people do business. And in terms of vacancies, in terms of rentals, anecdotally, we know that, uh, we know that the multifamily, the high-end multifamily that's been built in the city, as soon as it's, it's given its occupancy permit, is essentially full. In general, occupancy in the city is 1.5%, or vacancy, I should say. Marcus Milchamp, last week, which is the Nationwide Real Estate Research Firm, just put out a, a multifamily study in Milwaukee, and they cite, you know, Creek Franklin Market is having less than 1.5% vacancy rate. So, there is a need for housing, there's a need for options. I think this, uh, this serves a, a good need and, and actually meets that kind of goal. So, I'll leave it at that.
Great, thank you, Ken. Um, I'm gonna, I'm not going to comment, because everybody's commented, but I did jot down, as the speakers came through or the emails came through, things I thought were addressed as legit questions, not opinions and what have you. So, uh, we're going to try to answer this quickly. So, first one was trail on private property, that trail that goes to the east. Doug, is that on private property, or is that on not-private property?
That is on the property of the condo association. That is not on the Christina Court properties. It is, uh, entirely on that 20-acre property.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number of streetlights. Will it be required to have the number of streetlights that we have in any subdivision? It will follow all state and local codes for lighting, put candles, what have you. So, uh, that's going to be taken care of, and those are one of the things we get in conditions and restrictions. Uh, community versus neighborhood, we kind of went over this. This, it, it's very near and dear to your neighborhood, I, I totally get this. Um, these guys have the job to look at entire community, and Andy kind of laid that out with our strategic plan. Uh, you've heard that all before. Elm Road entrances, comment was made, we can't leave it to the state. Actually, we have to leave it to the state. That, you know, uh, not, not Elm Road, it was Howell Avenue. We have to leave it to the state, it's their road. So, uh, we're kind of there, the state's going to handle that going forward. Uh, Oakview Business Park, we kind of covered that, it was promised as a park in my turn, my time here, I've never heard that. There is a small park that exists there, but, uh, if you misunderstood that, it, it was always proposed to be a business park. Um, somebody mentioned, give this parcel to the high school. First of all, to make clear, the city does not own this parcel, it's privately owned. Uh, I applaud your generosity on that, I personally am not that generous and would not give my property to the school. Uh, again, that's a private decision on homeowner, if that's what they wanted to do with their property.
Mr. Mayor, just to add on to that, too, because I, I know a gentleman spoke about us hiring the developer, I want, I think that's, make that clear, that we didn't, we're not involved in, in the transaction of the property or finding the developer, um, or anything along those lines, that's all a private transaction, and we're, we're responding to, to that, that proposal right now. So, just to clear that up.
Yep, great point, Andrew. Um, the water issues, the retention pod in the flood zone, uh, when I finish up, I'm going to, if, grave or Mike, if you want to handle that one, we'll come back to it. Uh, management companies don't come through. Uh, my time as an alderman and a mayor, this is my personal experience, most of my complaints are homeowner on homeowner. They are not from apartment complexes or condo complexes, because they have management services. The owner, the renter typically goes to management, management has a paid service, they take care of the snow, they take care of the grass, whatever it might be. If it gets to the level of us, we usually call, they get the service right on it. Homeowners do not respond that quickly. Um, Alderman Gell, he, he made the point, actually, I just learned that tonight, 5% of the homes are rentals. Uh, one exists in my subdivision. And quite frankly, they leave it up to whoever they hire to do it, or the, the renter. Uh, it's not being taken care of. I'd love them to have a management service to take care of that particular home. Um, schools and overcrowding, it is up to the school to come up with their strategic plan, actually, when they built Forest Ridge, they take birth rates and projections out, and that's how they figure how much square footage they need per school and where they need it. Uh, that is really, it was kind of covered on, on my right side here, I think, by Rich or Steve. Um, the trailer court comparison, uh, that's not apples to apples, that's way out of there, that, that trailer park deal on 27th. Uh, we covered Howell's State Highway. Uh, one gentleman asked, why Chicago? Um, Steve, you kind of covered this one, or Ken, I think you said it, uh, developers come from all over, downtown Milwaukee, Chicago, wherever, if they're going to invest this type of money in Oak Creek, they are going to listen. We do not solicit them, they came to us. Actually, they came to the property owners, which they really did. Um, so again, why no one in Wisconsin? I love to hire locally. Love to have this, no offense, guys, love to have it locally. But again, if nobody locally had the interest or the specialty in doing it, or the vision, uh, can't fault them for that. Um, there were questions about the, the rezoning, and we pretty much covered that, but the rules for water, fire, et cetera, these homes will be subject to all municipal codes that we have. Won't be exceptions on them going forward. Uh, Doug talked about the number of units and why. Uh, there was a question about challenging the number of homeownership decline, things like that. We didn't come up with those statistics, it really come, came from the developer, but I think Alderman Krikowski made the point, too. There's, there's a lot of things on, on crime, and if people can afford it, and it's a lot of speculation, and we don't know where those numbers are coming from either. So, um, I hope we try to cover that. Um, I, I will go back to the water and, uh, the pond, so I'll give it to the experts here. We'll start with our city engineer, Mr. Simmons.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the bottom line is that we have a very stringent stormwater ordinance, and we apply that to all development, uh, in the city. And, um, I think the, uh, results speak for themselves. Uh, 25 years ago, we had flooding, uh, in many areas of the city with just a one-inch rainfall, and, um, I had a stormwater master plan developed, and we are following that, and that ordinance, uh, came out of that. And, um, we have not had significant flooding in the city since the July storm of 2010, so we're going on nine years, and that probably just shinks us by saying that. But, um, I mean, you see flooding all around us, uh, across the country. And, uh, so maybe there's some luck involved there, but the bottom line is, it is a solid ordinance, and, um, we've seen the conceptual stormwater, uh, plan here, and we are confident that, uh, if this goes forward, uh, working with the developer's engineer, that there will be a workable plan.
But Mike, could you just touch on the streetlights quick as well? I know we had some conversation, or late last week, and I think that'd be helpful to-
Yes, yeah. Um, that, there's, yes, there is latitude, uh, in, in the streetlight, and we actually have, um, uh, some variances in their variations in the standards, uh, within the, the, uh, design manual, uh, and the municipal code. So, i- in working with the, the developer going forward, if, if that is the course, um, we certainly could take a look at that and, um, get adequate lighting, and yet not, um, and try to minimize it to the surrounding area. So, so there is, there is something that can be looked at there, definitely.
And then just one more comment. I remember one of the emails mentioned a berm on the backside and the floodplain, and I, you might have addressed this already, Doug. It can't be in there, but go ahead.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, on this lot, and perhaps equally as important on the lots on Christina Court, a good portion of that is located within the, the floodway and, and wetland. So, uh, we would not allow berms in wetland areas, certainly not in floodway areas. Uh, we don't allow structures in wetland areas or floodway areas, and I know there's some back there, but that's, I mean, that's not, that's not the point. It's, it's just that there, that area that's designated as floodway, that area that's designated as wetland, that's going to be there. And there won't be, you know, berms in there, and unfortunately, I mean, that goes both ways, you know, you won't see any structures there, but it also doesn't allow us to do berms, or, I, I don't know about plantings, but certainly berms would not be allowed there.
Chris, you wanted to make one more point?
I just, or one question, maybe Doug, I don't know if you can answer it. Um, if people at some point choose to, um, can they purchase the property or a condo after a period of time, or at all?
Again, I would defer to the, the applicant about that. Uh, it's, uh, you know, what the city restricting the, the, I mean, again, we can restrict very easily, and rightly so, you know, the square footage, the setbacks, the architectural, but when it comes to, in terms of the form of ownership, I think that's a little more of a gray area.
Mm-hmm. So, they wouldn't be able to purchase down the road?
Uh, that'd be something up to the applicant.
Uh, those are all my comments. I do want to thank you for the respect you showed. I appreciate comments coming both ways, back and forth, uh, and I appreciate your patience, because really, this is the process we have to go through, and you guys participate really well in it. So, regardless of how these guys go, I appreciate that.
Mayor Dan, yeah, I just, and again, I, I want to get as much information as I possibly can to, again, make an educated, uh, decision. On the flyer, and I heard it mentioned during the public comments, light, light pollution. And Mike, you know, we're talking about light standard, what's, what is light pollution? Is that too many lights in a given area? I don't, so.
It's the, you know, purely by the ordinance, it's the, the, the foot candles that would, would cross, uh, the property line.
Pray light, that's what they, they call it, cut off shades on.
And obviously, there are regulations that govern how much of this light from a project could go into surrounding or adjoining areas.
Right, and I mean, we're, we're talking about, I mean, generally, when you, um, when we're, we're experiencing comments, complaints about, uh, you know, light spillage on the property, it's adjacent to commercial development. I mean, we're talking streetlights that are, you know, the, the streetlights, uh, they're, they're directed down at the-
So, Mike, Doug, as, as you see it, light pollution is a non-issue?
Well, I think it's, maybe it's, there's a clarification made here. I mean, a lot of the, the, uh, concerns that we get, quite frankly, are certainly when you put a development in a new area that had not been developed, there's, there's a difference, and there's no disputing that. Uh, we have our standards, pretty stringent standards with respect to foot candles and the property line, and in many cases, those are met, but it's just that's such a, it's a stark difference from nothing to what's there, that it seems like it's overpowering. I would suggest to you that, and to the people in attendance today, that we're in a better position to control that under a PUD than we would be under a subdivision. And we can, can certainly control the, the type and level of, of street lighting, but more importantly, we may have some ability to control some of the, the lighting that's on the, the units, and in terms of some of the point sources. Something that we definitely would not have had it been a single-family or even a two-family subdivision.
That's determined or governed, again, at Planning Commission?
By the conditions and instructions.
Got some, Steve?
I have a question for Jeremy, if he could come back up to the podium. For what it's worth, uh, when we met, one of the questions I had of the developer was the quality of the construction of the homes, and who was building them. So, um, your response was Rochester Homes were doing the homes, and you explained to me why you chose them, and then you also told me who would be doing the clubhouse and that. So, I'd like for you to, like, recreate that meeting and, and, and explain to us your relationship with Rochester Homes, and I say that because they're not within, they're not a Wisconsin company, but they're from Indiana. But I think it's relevant to perhaps even put some fears aside.
No, not in particular. Yeah, just, hey, but go ahead, we're, we're down the path. Okay. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll try and keep it brief. I made a mention about, um, us doing a lot of research, um, seeking out Rochester, not only because of their quality and the ownership group that I had met with, and I brought him to some of the initial planning meetings. I think, uh, Mayor, you were there, and I think Ken, you were also there, when we brought it up as a, as a, let's have a meeting, let's talk through this, and I brought up one of the owners from Rochester to talk about their stringent requirements that they use in their prefabbed home design, all the way through construction, making sure that it adheres to all of the codes that we know we're going to be subject to. So, um, really, that's, that's the nutshell. When I went to the factory, uh, three times prior to, uh, coming here today, just seeing, you know, a conditioned space and seeing, um, these houses that really are of particular quality, and watching how they're made in a conditioned area with guys that have been there for 10, 15 years, and the consistency of putting these homes together was very, very impressive. And so, then walking through the two or three models they have on site, and getting into some of the design work and some of the amenities, um, I came back just, you know, levitating to some degree because I knew this was the way we had to go. And just to be clear, um, these houses, although they're prefab, we will stick-build or do a traditional build of the garages that will be attached to each one of these homes, as well as pouring the individual foundation. So, there is some work that is required on our end. It's not just, oh, this prefab home arrives, they put it up with a crane, there's four boxes, and, uh, here's the keys to your new home, and we walk away. Um, it's a much more in-depth process than that. We actually have quite a bit of finishing work on the back end as well. There's some siding, there's some vinyl flooring that, you know, the manufactured flooring, we have to line up where the mait wall will be. So, there's a lot more that goes into it, um, that's going to be on our end as well as the developer overseeing with the GC how to complete these homes from, you know, arrival to day that we turn the keys over to a potential tenant.
And then the clubhouse and that, that's all local contractors are doing that. So, so I, okay, that answers my question. I appreciate the, uh, the leeway here, all that stuff was brought up in all the discussions tonight, uh, and how, you know, the mayor said, like to have stuff, uh, locally. We've got some potential local folks that'll be doing that work. So, thank you, that's, that's all I had, and thanks for, uh, the leeway.
Uh, seeing no further discussion, are we ready for a motion?
I, uh, I guess I, I will ask one more time about the information, and I, I'm guessing the information does, does not exist, that there's, there's not information or examples to support the claim of declining property values of increased crime in this type of development area. It's not there?
City, the city didn't have any, so, uh, you know, where, where the claims came from, I do not know. I was not here at the planning meeting on where it was brought up, so, on May 14. Can't speak from the floor, sir. Cannot speak from the floor.
Um, Dukenyak moved to approve ordinance number 2939, approving a rezoning of the property at 10780 South Howell Avenue from A1 Limited Agricultural to RD1 Two-Family Residential Planned Unit Development.
Kirkelski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Okay. Um, at this time, we will just adjourn for a five-minute break. If anybody needs to go to the bathroom, get a water, and then we will continue with item 10. So, you, you can educate me on that later. We'll reconvene the meeting. Uh, item 10 is a consideration of a resolution authorizing the payment of bills and debts and obligations. Bridget, you've been waiting a long time for this.
I have. Entertaining evening, though. Um, as we have done in the past with the common council choosing to have only one meeting in the month of July, we will need to approve bills so that we can continue to operate as if we had that meeting, and we will bring two vendor summary reports to your July 16th common council meeting.
Great. Questions, comments for Bridget? Not motion.
Gale, move to approve resolution 12068, there's 061819, authorizing payment of bills, debts, and obligations.
Guzakowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Item 11.
Pardon me, pardon me. Dukenyak.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 11 is consideration of a- Item 11 is consideration of a motion to concur with the mayor's appointments and reappointments, uh, for the library board. And questions concerning those two individuals? If none, motion.
Bill move to concur with the mayor's appointments as listed for the library board, three-year terms expired June of '22.
Guzakowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 12 is consideration of an ordinance adjusting the salary range, annual salary for the inspector positions in the engineering department. Bridget.
I'm pinch hitting for Judy on this so she didn't have to come out tonight for this one item. Personnel committee is aware and I don't know which, how far the communication has gone yet to common council. But a couple of weeks ago, we went through the process to hire a vacant inspector position. Personnel committee did authorize for Andrew to go above the range if we did need to. We were getting worried, um, based on the low number of applicants, if we would find somebody qualified within the wage range that we had listed. So we did in fact have to offer somebody $75,000 from a neighboring community. That was a pay cut for that individual. And it is over the range, but it's also over the pay of our existing two other building inspectors. So we went back to personnel committee last week and we asked them, one, to adjust the range. So we made it where it goes up to 75,000 and we brought up the low end of that range. We will holistically look at the range in the next budget process or really when we do the ordinance for everybody here at the end of the year. But for the interim, we need to go a little bit out of what our current practice has been. And we're requesting that we increase the pay of these other two inspectors, which in the total cost, WRS FICA included, it's an $8,000 annual increase that's not budgeted for 2019. Will be reflected as we go forward for 2020, but pending common council's approval, um, it would go into effect for them today.
Questions, comments for Bridget? All right, any comments from personnel?
Bridget covered it.
Hundred percent.
I think Mayor, it's, this is somewhat indicative though of where we're seeing recruitment and retention on our professional staff is going to see some wage pressures. Something we're just going to have to deal with with budgets coming up and Andrew's
I would agree and we're seeing more and more of it as we get retirements coming through and we have to refill those slots and positions. Okay, um, motion.
Alderman will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2940, an ordinance adjusting the salary range and annual salary for the inspector positions in the engineering department. Niack second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item 13 is consideration of a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $2.85 million worth of taxable general obligation promissory notes. Bridget.
So on May 21st, the common council approved the plan of finance to issue the bonds for the project cost as it relates to the, um, Amazon project in Ryan Business Park. Just a reminder, as we are working with Justin with Baird, we are using a short-term private placement note, that's the paperwork that's in front of you. We do the short term so that we can get the project up and running, gain the increment. And then once we have that increment, we move that into a long-term financing. So that's just kind of been our process. It looks a little bit different than our prior advisor, but still operates the same. So Justin is here from Baird if you have questions, um, after he explains the great rate that we received.
Thanks Bridget and that's, it's great seeing everyone again tonight. So I'll keep this short and sweet, uh, just kind of run through the financing results. Uh, in, in your packet, you have a one-page summary that should say issue summary at the top. Uh, I'll run through this as was a taxable general obligation promissory note in the amount of $2,850,000. This note will close June 27th of 2019 with maturity of June 1, 2020 and a first interest of June 1, 2020. This is callable October 1, 2019 and this was non-rated at a 2.89%. So an excellent rate, uh, our projection was, was a little conservative at 3.5, but we'd rather be conservative than that. So we received it at an excellent rate and, and which essentially resulted in about $13,000 in savings over the projected. So all good news there. Any questions for me?
Could you just talk about the next steps? I know Bridget kind of alluded to it, but with the private placement, the, the process, just talk a little bit about what's next with this issue, uh, moving forward.
Well, so, so this was a private placement like Andrew alluded to. So we went out and solicited bids from, uh, local and national banks and essentially the Bank of Alma was the lowest bid at 2.89%. There was another bid out in, um, Utah, that bid pretty aggressively as well, was a little bit higher. But essentially the process is the same. The, the paperwork, you can see that it's basically, uh, just a shorter condensed document versus going through the public offering route, which is more costly and time-consuming for staff. So with this being a shorter-term loan, this, this was the most cost-effective way to go.
Any other questions regarding it? Seeing none, motion.
13.
Kirkelski make a resol-, um, make a motion to adopt resolution number 12071-061819, authorizing the issuance and sale of a $2,850,000 taxable general obligation promissory note.
Niack second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Bill will abstain and just as a FYI, it's, uh, as I'm an employee of Baird, just avoid any potential conflicts or perception conflicts of interest. We've chosen to, for my participation in the actual ordinance. That is, that is issuization.
And Guzakowski.
Aye.
Is that a word?
You made that up. You made it a word, you made all of us.
Kind of like re-adjourned.
I thought I was the only guy that did that.
Okay, item 14 is consideration of a resolution consenting to the collateral assignment of tax increment district number 11 finance development agreement by and among Drexel Hotel Investment LLC, TFC Oak Creek LLC, Pine Tree Properties XLLC, Pine Tree Properties XI LLC, McFarland State Bank and the City of Oak Creek. You got this one Melissa?
Sure, thank you Mayor. I think whoever on the council would like to make that motion is going to be the bravest soul with all of the parties involved. But the bottom line is the council saw this, uh, not so long ago when, uh, this property was sold to the aforementioned new owners. Bottom line is in terms of, um, the document before you, this collateral assignment, when the property was sold in 2018, the council consented to a very similar document in terms of form, which we had already approved. This involves the Town Place Suites Marriott at Drexel Town Square. So this relates to a refinancing. So in terms of what's before you, we're making a recommendation to adopt resolution 12070. There is no direct fiscal impact as a result of the consenting to this assignment.
Good, thank you. Questions for Melissa? Again, I do think we ran across this just a few months back, six months back, so. If not, motion.
Bill move to approve resolution 12070-06819, consenting to the collateral assignment of tax incremental district number 11 finance development agreement by and among Drexel Hotel Investment LLC, TFC Oak Creek LLC, Pine Tree Properties XLLC, Pine Tree Properties XI LLC, McFarland State Bank and the City of Oak Creek.
Guzakowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail. Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 15 is community development and it is consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Milwaukee County for the properties at 3810 East American and 9050 South Annette. Doug, you got this one?
Yeah, thank you, thank you Mayor. The applicant is requesting approval of a minor land division, in essence, a certified survey map for the properties at 3810 East American and 9050 South Annette. So when we, when we say minor land division, the difference between that and a certified survey map is negligible. I mean, our nomenclature is that minor land divisions are used when no additional lots are being created and you're just adjusting lot lines. So you're actually approving a certified survey map that adjusts the lot lines between these two properties. Uh, as you can see from the location map on there, there's, there are, there are two properties roughly, uh, you know, the, the area right along American Avenue is a property and, uh, to the, uh, east and kind of north of Annette Place, uh, that the proposed certified survey map, and I will bring that up shortly. It takes that, those two properties, still two properties, but we can figure that lot one into a much larger property, lot two into a little bit smaller property, just to assist in the county's efforts to find partners or owners or prepare for sale of this property. I mean, there's a number, number of issues obviously that, that go along with, uh, developing a subdivision or, or selling for development. Uh, I, you know, just note that those will be handled as they come up. And in their due course, this land division, this minor land division is not the time and place for those. But it just kind of aligns the existing property lines. Were two lots before, there's two lots now, uh, just that the configuration is a little bit different.
Uh, questions, Mike? I know you missed the meeting. We had it last, last week and it, weeks ago. Is that the line on the northwest side?
Yep, lot two, if you can see that on your.
I got you. Okay, all right. I'm good.
Like that whole thing is county-owned right now?
It is, it was a result of foreclosure.
What's the, uh, what's the plan moving forward?
Yeah, I, I don't know that the, the county has a solid plan in mind at this point, other than to prepare the properties for eventual sale.
At, at planning, uh, they came in and quite a bit of the neighborhood came out. They were very curious about it, obviously, what was going on. Uh, again, it's really, as Doug said, prepare the property. There was some light contamination or they think it's light contamination and they think they isolated what they had to do at lot two.
They hope it's light.
So, yeah, so anyways, they're, they're moving forward to get the property prepared to develop.
Well, then the notes were conflicting and earlier on it said there was a heavy, uh, contamination.
But, but the county really spoke to it. And again, it would have to go through the phase one or the phase two.
Nothing that I'm aware of.
The applicant's here, if you want the county, if you want him up. Uh, yeah. If he has, if he has anything to add. Sit through this. I know. Sorry Dave. No, we, we spent quite a bit of time out of that. Name an address please.
David Cheldini, uh, Milwaukee County employee, uh, residential address 6201 South 116th Street in Hales Corners. The two parcels under consideration were acquired through, um, foreclosure of delinquent taxes in rem tax foreclosure. They've been carried on the books in Milwaukee County before my time, so 10, 15 years. Carried on the books as contamination, significant contamination along with, uh, supporting documentation from the DNR, uh, that both sites were, were indeed contaminated. My division, uh, previously was in economic development, uh, so I have an eye for those kinds of things. Now I'm in the housing division, um, and a very helpful tool that housing has is, uh, federal funds for brownfield remediation. So a couple of years ago, our department, uh, decided to take a, a good look at this site, uh, because we recognized it as, as having potential. And after, uh, various phase one, phase twos, working with, uh, DNR, the conclusion came that, uh, in fact, there's only one parcel that is contaminated, not both of them. And it is only that small north, northwestern section, uh, where the contamination exists. So this CSM is simply, uh, a lot line adjustment. Same tax key, same addresses, same everything, but we are simply containing, uh, the contaminated space into a, a spot as small as possible, uh, lot one. Zero plans, uh, for the county, uh, we haven't even discussed it. Frankly, uh, we have no idea what we're going to do with it, but, but needless to say, um, lot two is, is, we're, we're still looking at lot two as to the extent of the remediation, uh, is it just going to be capping? Is it just gonna, are we gonna physically remove soil and, and haul it to off-site? These are things that we're looking at right now, but for the time being, uh, the county made the decision to, to do this lot line adjustment.
We have done a, um, phase one and a phase two.
Yes, uh, we, we've worked, uh, closely with the DNR. DNR has a, uh, an online website called BERTS. You can basically, um, query any parcel of land in the state of Wisconsin to see if, if, uh, if it's contaminated and you will, you know, six months ago, uh, lot one showed up on BERTS. And if you go there today, uh, DNR has, has wiped it clean. We've proven to them, um, that it is in fact a clean site.
Thank you.
David, is the, um, are your borings and data from lot two, is that available publicly?
Uh, is it available publicly? I suppose we're a government entity, open a records request. I mean, yeah, don't think you have to go that far, I'd be happy to share, um, exactly, uh, the soil boring locations, lot two.
About contamination findings?
Yeah, we've got the full reports. I'm not an environmental expert, uh, but the way it's been explained to me is that the contamination that's found on lot two, um, is not as severe, um, as it could have been. Without further investigation, right now the feeling is that the nature of the contamination was contaminated fill that was dumped on-site years ago by unknown parties at this time.
Other questions? All right, seeing none.
Alderman will make, Toman will make a motion to adopt resolution number 12072, approving a certified survey map submitted by David Cieldini. Celdini, sorry. Milwaukee County for properties at 3810 East American Avenue and 9050 South Annette Place.
Guzakowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Item 16 is an engineering and it's consideration of a resolution authorizing the final payment of $3,600, uh, to DC Burbach Inc. Mike?
This is the project that was a shared project between Oak Creek and, and the city of South Milwaukee for the improvements at, uh, the intersection of Pennsylvania Avenue and Milwaukee Avenue. And it was, uh, a widening, uh, to provide, uh, safe, uh, turning lanes, um, and that's kind of a bigger, uh, uh, a busier intersection than the others along that roadway because that's kind of the main drag for vehicles, uh, in, in and out of South Milwaukee. Project was constructed last year, uh, we were actually prepared to close it out last year. South Milwaukee asked that we not do that until they were convinced that the, um, the grass restoration was going to come up in the spring and, uh, everything looks good. So, um, like to make the final payment and, and just close the project out.
Questions for Mike? Seeing none, motion.
Kirkelski will make a motion to adopt resolution number 12069-061819, authorizing final payment of $3,600, accepting the workmanship of DC Burbach Inc.
Niack second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 17 is licensing, like turn that all over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you Mayor. We have the much anticipated license committee report that I'm sure everybody has had an opportunity to review. Does anybody have any questions with, uh, what's on the report? Okay, seeing none, then Kirkowski will make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the June 18th, 2019 license committee report.
Niack second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item 18 is our vendor summary report. Everybody please take a look and direct your questions appropriately to the front table. table.
I have a couple of questions. And, um, number six for the, um, website, is this a monthly payment for the hosting and the website support?
I'm sorry. My commute. I don't believe it's a monthly fee, I believe it's an annual.
I think that's the annual charge total for the year. But we'll, we'll, we will verify that and get back to you if that's different, but that's what I recall. I mean, the annual.
Uh, number eight, the 40,000 bucks to Holtz Motors Transmission Replacement, and we purchased a new police vehicle, is that correct? Forty grand for a transmission is a lot. Yeah. That's a lot.
I just replaced one. It was not 40 grand.
Okay.
It was a lot, but not 40 grand.
So a transmission and we bought a new.
A new squad and the transmission.
Thank you.
Bridgette, number 11, it goes without saying that that money is generated by hotel motel tax, so there's no, nothing coming out of the city budget for that sponsorship, correct?
Correct. That is tourism, um, and Kristen did send me some information on that. Um, I was, I was impressed as she looked at the vendor summary report and said, hey, you might get some questions on this, so here's some information. So kudos to Kristen for having my back and looking at that. So, um, you know, what she wanted me to make sure I mentioned if asked is that it's a, um, the Rock Sports Complex. There is, it's a group package between us and the Rock. Um, in doing that, we receive a game sponsorship for the July 31st game, uh, social media promotion, signage in the stadium, an onsite booth, branded giveaway, so it's, it's more than on the surface a sponsorship, so.
It's really characterized it as an Oak Creek Day at the, at the ballpark, so I'd encourage you to mark your calendars. Uh, we'll be getting information out to you as well as the general public to, to do that.
Turn out the first pitch?
Me?
Uh, I don't know. I think we gotta get somebody a little younger with a better arm for that, maybe.
So one-day deal? We don't get any.
June or July.
We don't get a permanent banner, sir.
El Fekler lives in Franklin, though. Not, not, that's a possibility on the road, but not as far as the package, no.
All right. Any other questions on the vendor summary report?
Well, I mean, if we're going for it, number nine is our first payment to IKEA per their development agreement. Really just stalling so that I can let you know that this granicus was an annual payment. Year two of a five-year contract.
Let's tell them. Random. That's not bad.
If no other questions, motion.
Bill moved to approve the June 12th, 2019 vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $794,362.85.
Guzakowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Item 19 is consideration of a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent G, to discuss the following. Tamika Bates at L versus City of Oak Creek at L, Milwaukee County Case Number 2019, CV And B, Michelle Machet Schmidt at L versus the City of Oak Creek at L, Milwaukee County Case Number 2019, CV 004295. And C, Woodman's Food Market, Inc. versus the City of Oak Creek, Milwaukee County Case Number 2018, CV 005000. President Gale?
One second, man. I gotta get the amended. Oh, you read that?
Yeah.
Bill moves to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub G, to discuss the following. A, Tamika Bates at L versus City of Oak Creek at L. B, Robin Machet Schmidt at L versus City of Oak Creek at L. And C, Woodman's Food Market, Inc. versus City of Oak Creek.
Guzakowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.